Roll call. Gabriel, can you call the roll please?
Yeah, certainly Chairman. Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Kudjinski is absent. Commissioner Crandall is absent currently. Chair Pro Tim Wu?
Yeah.
Vice Chair Blackwell?
I'm here.
And Chair Roland?
Here. And we have one item on our study session tonight, the continuation of the South El Camino Real focus area standards. So I will, Gabriel, I'll turn it right over to you and you can get us started.
Okay, thank you Chairman. So yeah, this is the third part to our study session on the South El Camino Real development standards. And so I'm gonna pass it on to Chris, who's gonna really start us off with this study session.
Good evening Chair Commissioners. Christopher Wright, Associate Planner. Tara, can you pull up my PowerPoint please? Next slide please. So we've had two study sessions now on this topic that it's a focus on the South El Camino Real focus area, the general plan that the Planning Commission had requested. They have a discussion on this area of town, review the development standards that were set in 2015 to ensure that the standards are effective and promoting the goals of the general plan. We had initially a discussion with developer Nick Buchanan that developed the first and only mixed use project so far in the zone. He gave a lot of testimony and photographed his experiences in the, with the standards. And a discussion continued. It seemed to form around three main areas where the commission may want to recommend changes to the council for consideration, of which the city council would have to initiate direction to staff to make those changes. But I think it seemed like the commission wanted to, I'll go over those now. First, to consider lowering the minimum commercial floor area ratio requirement from .35 to something lower. There was some discussion whether it be .3 or .25. Those were a couple of numbers mentioned. Adjusting the height ceiling, right now there's a 35 foot height ceiling. If you want to go to 33 feet, you need a conditional use permit. And consider reducing that height ceiling to 33 feet with less emphasis on coastal views from the freeway. The third one is to consider allowing shared parking with a study and consider other provisions like compact parking, bike credits. So bike parking as a credit for vehicle parking. Possibly, I didn't hear a lot of firm direction on whether to lower the parking requirement for a use like residential. And then in our last study session, we had additional discussion about density ambiguity for residential zones or residential density in our mixed use zones. There's a gross and net standard. And following this study session, we reviewed state law and found that in cases where the general plan has an objective standard, there's a range gross and net density in the general plan. And there may be ambiguity in the zoning code like we discussed. The, the city is directed by state law to use an objective standard in the general plan. So we found as a and an interpretation is not needed at this time. The city can process applications according to the net standard. However, if we want to clear this up for the future, the commission could consider forwarding a recommendation of the city council to make some cleanup changes in the zoning ordinance. So that, that concludes my presentation. However, I think Gabriel wanted to add some additional points on that last bullet item.
Yeah, thank you, Chris. I think you covered it quite well. So yeah, staff had some confusion regarding the zoning code. And you know, how to apply a net versus gross and you know, it's odd, it's an odd situation because whenever you apply gross, that is always the lesser of the residential units in terms of yield when you apply the gross lot area or gross acres. And so it always results in a lower yield. So reviewing the Housing Controllability Act, thanks to Chris for identifying that. When, if there is in the general plan, you know, a standard that is different than that in the zoning code, the general plan takes precedence. So under state law, we would apply that. So yeah, again, there's, there's nothing more that the planning commission needs to do, but it does make sense for us. I, in my opinion, to amend the code to take out that language that says the lesser of gross lot area or net lot area for determining residential yields for mixed use projects. So just some clarification there. And we did run that through, through Mel Richardson and you know, he was in agreement with that too. So, so just wanted to give an update there in terms of some additional information that staff was able to find. So, so that is really our presentation with this, the, the purpose of the study session is to really maybe refine what the planning commission may want to make as recommendations to city council. At this point, you know, if, if your recommendation is that there would be potential code amendments and that be initiated, staff would proceed with investigating those amendments further and make some recommendations that would come back to the planning commission and then again to city council for adoption. But that would be, that would be only in the case if the city council decides to initiate amendments to code. So, so this is definitely open. In the staff report, we identified those four areas and maybe what we could do is leave up that one slide. I think the first slide that Chris identified in this PowerPoint that had the four areas that were identified by the planning commission. One was the the FAR for commercial and the mixed use project. And Tara, can you pull up that PowerPoint again? Please. And then if you can leave it on the first slide or second slide. Yeah, there we go. The second about height, just kind of giving us some, some clear direction on, on height or clear recommendations to council. And then parking. And then this last point, I would say there's not really much to do here versus but, but there probably is room for a code cleanup. So it's, it is very clear and it matches up with the general plan.
Okay, thank you. We've only got four commissioners here this evening, but let's see. Don, it looked like you're muted off. Did you want to kick us off?
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I kind of support, and it's not really clear in this particular chart, but when you just brought up Gabriel about either or, less than, above than, that really limits you guys at the counter. You mentioned on the very first study session that you just mentioned now. That between net and or less than or, and we need to clean that up, which will really make things life simpler for you people at the counter. I would support the, we need to adjust this height ceiling. When we look at Buchanan's project, you can go up to 35 feet, 33, 35 with agreement of permission by the council. I don't think that's too high. I think we should, part of it, we should lower, lower the approval level of that back to planning commission. Now that extra two feet drove a lot of the cost into that particular project. You couldn't peek the roof. You couldn't, you had to put equipment well in. He had a, the second floor had to have special trusses. So to make things easier for the builder, the customer, where the profit was, which is the, where the apartments are, I think I would like a vote or consensus of the commission that we support going to council for that part of a change to allow 35, 33 and 35 feet plate on top of the roof. You know, as a matter of course, remember the original area when we came out of the GPAC, Jim and you were on, was this was 45 feet on both sides of the street. And Buchanan came in arbitrarily or voluntarily dropped it to 35 feet. And then we started making a lot of sausage out of everything and made life really difficult for him, you know, with a lot of personality council interaction. Where the code is now with the setbacks as you go up over the alleyway, all that's fine, but I think that extra two feet is pretty critical to make things blossom down there on South El Camino Real and possibly some of the other mixed use areas. So I would support that. And in addition to the, the part that Gabriel just made, which is really affecting you guys at the, at the counter every day, sure. On the floor area ratio, and the bullet says minimum far from .352 question mark at the bullet. And the briefing is use a commercial percentage of mixed use project rather than a current floor area ratio. And I'd like to have a little more discussion on that with, with the commission and staff to make sure that we get that particularly right. Are we going to stay, have to stay with the floor area ratio because it's an objective standard? Or can we go legally to a percentage and with that balance things and stir that, get the results we want in the areas we want. And we spoke there is that we wanted to renew and refresh. That's enough for me for now.
Okay, Commissioner Wu?
Yeah, thank you Chair. Well, my, first of all, regarding the the lot area calculation, I think there's an issue as Gabriel just explained. I'm always of an opinion that it should be net. So just as some cleanup on the zoning code, what, what we'll do. So, and I agree that there's no need for the planning commission to take any action on that. Development standards regarding the retail percentage. I, I did some little study and I found that the for retail, pretty much for every square foot of retail space, we need to provide a square foot of a parking. Because the parking requirement is one parking space for every 300, 300 square feet of retail space. And a parking space would take about 300 square feet. There's a one-on-one issue, one-on-one ratio while residential is much lower. For a 1800 square feet two-bedroom, you, you need to provide a two parking space, which is about 600 square feet. So if we look at the example of San Ten Ten Santiago, they pretty much maximize what they could do. And they are, if they are at one point, I believe it was the 1.3. That's a little bit less than a 1.5, which is allowed. And I think it's a desire to have higher density. So if we want to achieve the full potential of this lot, something needs to be done to allow the development to get a little more square footage there, get a little higher FAR. But the parking is a thing that's limited. So I'm of an opinion that either we can reduce the required retail space or we give some relief on the parking requirement. We never talk about in loop parking fee. I understand it's a citywide issue. But that's another component. It can be a parking solution or a combination of those. That we should lower requirements on parking demand and to help the, the lot to achieve the desired 1.5 FAR. And that's my opinion. So so on our retail percentage, I think we possibly explore lowering it somehow. Whether it's .30, .25, I don't know yet. And it needs to be, needs to be a little more detailed to study. But in general, I agree with a, a package of measures to, to lower the demand for parking structure that will allow in turn more residential, more units to be built, a more full area and overall to, to try to to help them to approach the 1.5 FAR. Regarding the building height, I, I think the height is okay, although having a city council weighing on 35, 35 feet height limit is a burden for, for applicants. And I'm okay with recommending the city council to give it a back to a planning commission. One thing I'd like to point out is, Ten Ten Santiago is at about the location of the high point of El Camino Real. So once you go away from that point, you need a direction, the street just gets a little lower. So that issue will, will not as pressing. Because the freeway is climbing up, go toward, towards the south. So I, I don't expect that to be a huge problem. So I, I think it works well. I'm, I'm okay with asking the city council to give it a back to the planning commission. But I wouldn't say, let's just abolish the 35, 33 height limit, just to 35. I think, you know, the visual access to the ocean is in our general plan. It should be a consideration. It's, it's part of that overall package of the consideration. And we still need to take, take into account of that. So that, that's what I can think, think of at this moment. Thank you.
Commissioner Blackwell?
Yes, thank you. Well, again, I, I've got a I'm not going to repeat what Commissioner Wu just said about FAR, but I'm 100% on board with his comment. He was well, well said. And I definitely think that's the, the better approach to take. This whole thing with the, you know, ceiling height, you know, we've, we've seen a lot of real-time challenges from, you know, recent development in town. You know, what can be done with an extra foot or two, you know, and I just come from a different, my perspective is that, you know, anything can really be engineered for interior space. And I've always been challenged with, you know, plate heights and ceiling heights and, and all that. These are interior spaces. And I'm always concerned more with overall envelope as, you know, as a land use person from a zoning perspective. You know, I don't know how high something's going to be. I don't know how big it's gonna, you know, the building is going to be. And you know, how much of that space is going to be compromised and how much balance there's going to, there's going to be, you know, between the, you know, architecture, you know, the hard, hard scape and the soft scape. So when it comes to building height, you know, if we have a standard, we, you know, we should definitely stick with it. And there's a, there's a degree of discretion that's applied, you know, despite every project that, that comes to the planning commission. We're looking at it, you know, based on, you know, how that project compares to the standards for the use in that zone. And our planning department staff put together a report and we get the, you know, the compare and contrast, does it comply, does it not? And then the discretion we apply is, is applied based on the characteristics, not only of the project itself, but how that project fits into the surrounding environment. So for that reason, you know, I, I think, you know, sticking to a, a lower height as a standard. And if there is a request, there's a, there's a remedy that an applicant, an avenue that the applicant can take if they need more height. If they need some sort of variance to that standard, and we review it at, at the planning commission level. And we look at it, you know, in its entirety, how it compares on all sides. How it fits into the neighboring parcels and to that area of the community. And if we have a standard that's higher and, you know, it's a rubber stamp, you know, worst case scenario, we start to create, you know, these iron curtains or, for lack of a better term, you know, a canyonization, if you will, you know, potentially. If you don't look at each project individually, we could do that. So somebody gets lucky and they come in and they get, you know, the height that they need. And the next guy that comes in wants to develop parcel next to it, or maybe three or four parcels next to it. And they can't get the height because it just doesn't work. So if we had, if we had guidelines set in place, objectives that we could use, tools that we could use at the planning commission level, you know, the staff can use to to make findings and to prepare the reports for us to, to present in the public arena and, you know, talk about it and really determine whether or not it's a good fit characteristically, you know, spatially. You know, if it's scaled properly, if it's just too high, maybe it's just a no because it doesn't meet our objectives for diversity in the street state. Maybe there are just too many high buildings in that, on that block. So that's really my, I don't know if that's any, you know, anything useful for, for staff to take, but truly my, my position on height. You know, interior heights can be engineered and we all know that. It's just a matter of cost. And the developer doesn't want or can't budget, you know, open glass ceilings. Then they can't. And it just, you know, they move on to the next, next property and do it there. The other points here, I mean, we talked about many things in this discussion over various meetings, but I think that the, the last, the code change part, you know, I I'm kind of on board with what staff decides is best, you know, state, you know, state standards and and local codes, you know, we should, we should be consistent. And that's where the changes should be driven. So we're consistent with what the rest of the state is doing. And then we tailor it to our little community on a case by case. Otherwise, we're always chasing it. We're always kicking that can. But yeah, good conversation. I think we've come a long way. Do I think it needs to come back again? I don't know. I think there's probably enough has been discussed at this point. But thank you, Chris, for putting us together. And Gabriel, appreciate it.
Okay, I'll chime in here. I think, I think Don had a good idea with the height exception, asking council to bring that down to the planning commission level, the, the discretion for that, to bring that down to the planning commission level. The main reason is it's going to make it easier on the applicant. But we may also want to have something that says the reason for that. I mean, the planning commission would grant an extra height for purposes of aesthetics, things like that, so that we can, so that they can meet the design guidelines and the quality of design that we want. As opposed to just allowing them to have a bigger box, so to speak. You know, so that we can have more, you know, peak roofs and towers and things like that. So, but I do think it's a, it's a good idea for a number of reasons. I think, you know, the interesting point about the parking that Commissioner Wu brought up, the one-to-one square footage and the .35 far. I, I hesitate a little bit to change that because we had lots and lots of discussion back in the day with the general plan and things like that of, you know, there was a reason why .35, it was .35 far. That doesn't mean necessarily that we were right. We're, you know, a few years down the road, we could say, we could certainly saying, well, a .3 is better than a .35. But I know that the, it's the residential that gets these, in the mixed use development that gets the money, not so much the commercial. And we do, what we don't want is kind of a pure or nearly pure residential along El Camino Real. We wanted it to be, the design for it was, it's gonna, it's going to be a place, not just where people can live, but where they can really function. And they can go to a little grocery store. They can perhaps even, you know, have an office in the same building as their home. They can, it's a little restaurant there that they could just walk to. So I think with the parking question, one thing we want to keep in mind is that one of the goals here is to have a more pedestrian environment. Maybe one answer is for the commercial, we loosen up some parking standards a little bit. We allow slightly less in terms of, we require slightly less in terms of the parking, both in because we have incentives, but also because the notion is that a certain percentage of those customers are going to live on that street, maybe even live in that building. And they may not need as much parking as a non-mixed use development might require. So I think that's something for us to think about. I don't want to throw another question at staff. But so I think that that, if we do that or don't do that, or, or, you know, that's something that we should talk about and resolve here. And if, you know, the commissioners don't think that's a good idea, then, then that's fine. I think it's, we need to move forward with this. And I, I think we want to make sure we get pretty clear instructions to staff. Yeah, Gabriel?
You know, Chairman, I, I think that might be okay if the direction is maybe, or the recommendations to council is to look at more flexible standards for parking. And maybe you're mentioning more for commercial, then I think that gives us enough to be able to investigate different avenues, right? And that would come back to plant commission and ultimately the council again. So, so yeah, I don't think you need to have anything defined per se, but, you know, as long as you're saying, hey, you want us to investigate more flexibility for parking, and maybe it's commercial, I think that might be enough.
Okay, I, I would. And if there's consensus with the rest of the planning commission, it would be great. You know, the, if that, you know, if you could have that direction. Let's see. Oh, and I agree too with the net lot in the code. I think if we need to do a code cleanup or something to make it, you know, to remove the ambiguity. If all we have to do is do it in the zoning ordinance, that's fine, but it may be a, we might want to flag that part of the general plan to say next, you know, throw it in the bucket. So next time there's a general plan amendment in the city, maybe, you know, fixing the general plan verbiage, again, just to, so it's not ambiguous. And everybody's very clear on it. But in terms of the direction of going, you know, with, with a net lot, you know, I'm, I'm also in favor of that and giving people a little more space to do what they need to do. Yeah. And in, in terms of the height too, I'm a little less concerned with the canyonization. I think Mike's got, you know, I mean, it's, it's certainly a, a important thing to consider. But we do have our design guidelines that are meant to address that sort of thing. We've got building articulation. We got setbacks, things like that. So if it looked like we were starting to get towards a canyonization, we could, we could certainly handle that through the, the design guidelines as opposed to, you know, maybe imposing more restrictive standards or something like that. So I, I think it's a reasonable concern, but I'm pretty content with the design guidelines kind of handling, handling those standards. So I just want to check real quick, make sure I've got these little points. Yeah, I think so. Okay, let's see. Commissioner Wu, your, your mute's off. Did you have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, yeah. I, I think Chair Rudy, your comment on the mixed use and the desire to maintain the project to be mixed use is a valid, is a very good comment because we do, we do not want this building to be standalone residential project. We do not want the, the ground level to be professional office, which doesn't attract enough foot traffic. We want them to be mixed use. So, so I, I do think, you know, keeping enough retail space is important for the character and the atmosphere of the street as being pressure friendly. So when I look at the design development of standards, there is a provision saying about incentive to retail space. We're going to waive, waive some parking spaces when the retail exceeds .35 FAR. I think possibly we can look into the possibility to reverse that. And that is we can waive the retail parking requirement for, you know, for the first XYZ square foot, square feet, whether it's a 300 square feet, which, which equivalent to one space or 600 equivalent to two spaces. So we can say your first 500 square feet, you know, we don't, we don't ask for parking, on-site parking, because, you know, think about the side of the street. You, you take, take out a garage entry. Um, you, you take, uh, take out a, a garage entry, if you have one. Maybe there's enough space for a car or two. And maybe we can just call it, um, a parking credits on-street, on, uh, on-street parking and give a credit to them. So that, that's another way to, um, to think about a parking, at the same time, maintain enough retail space for the project. Um, so that's, that's a parking. And then another comment I'd like to add is, um, the density in terms of the, um, dwelling unit per acre, I, I'm of opinion that we, we should, we should abolish that. I think as, as, as long as we have F A R, the intensity has been defined along with other building coverage and the building height, et cetera. Uh, so really the, the limit of dwelling unit per acre is there to limit the small, small dwelling units, which I think, given the housing need of the city, given affordability of, um, of the housing in the city, you know, in Spanish. Um, we don't really need to, or we don't really want to, um, um, to discourage the, the development of a smaller unit. So I, I question the necessity of this dwelling unit limit on those mixed-use development.
Hey, Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, one more discussion item. Uh, I think on our, when we had the guest speaker in the first session there, Mr. McCann, who's, you know, in the business, he suggested lowering the FAR ratio to point two five. If we wanted to stay with it for area ratio rather than, you know, commercial percentage and all this other stuff. Uh, with, with lowering it to about point two five, get us the desired results, uh, that we're looking for. Question of staff and my fellow commissioners.
Yeah, as for staff, I think my suggestion would be in the, in the planning commission's motion, if there's some interest in exploring some of these ideas, uh, to carry on to what Gabriel had mentioned. Is this, it, it can be left a little bit more general if the commission isn't comfortable specifying a number. But there's some interest in recommending that city council to consider lowering, uh, the number. I think, I think staff would support that, right? Because new information could come out, come about through the review of zone changes. Uh, and the planning commission would have the opportunity to revisit this. But I, I think if the concern is, is it seems like a mix between parking standards and the burden of reserving so much of the project's profitability towards commercial uses when residential is more profit-driven in a project. I don't know if staff is ready to conclude that one solution is the only one. You know, maybe it's a mix between the two and that might warrant additional study. I hope that answers your question.
Very well done, but thank you.
And, and my fear, it, it's, you know, I, I have no problem changing any of the numbers to something that works better. My, my only fear is what I said before is if we lower that number, are we going to end up with sort of very little commercial, very little retail and lots and lots of, um, uh, of residential. And, uh, so I, but I don't know what the right number is. I mean, when we talked about it before, it seemed like point three five was the right number. You know, maybe, maybe point two five, you know, it, maybe that's the right number that, that feels like a kind of a big jump down to me. But I'm not sure. So I would certainly be in favor of staff asking staff to go research that and maybe sort of give, give some answers to that question or, or alternatives that we could do to, to, obviously, we want the people who build there to have something kind of commercially viable. But we also want to make sure there's enough, you know, commercial and retail there. And, and ask staff to come back and make some recommendations, either with FAR numbers or to get rid of FAR and use a different measure, whatever that might be, to preserve the original intent of what we're doing at, down there. Is that, is that reasonable? Is that a reasonable request of staff?
It, it is. Yeah, my suggestion is in, in the commission's motion, you could set some parameters. The direction of the code changes that, that would be encouraged, the council to consider. So like with the floor ratio standard and parking, it could be a combination of, uh, or study, um, of floor ratio and parking, um, changes that would maintain a healthy provision of commercial, visitors serving commercial uses in the mixed-use district while reducing barriers to constructing housing to meet the city's goals, something like that. You're, you're framing what what we're, what the commission would like to achieve with changes. And by doing that, you might not need to specify so much what the numbers are. So that, that would be my recommendation. So that, when this were to go to the council, I think what would be more useful for staff is, is in your motion to, uh, let the council know what changes that you want them to consider making.
Okay, so, and, and for tonight, I don't think we make, make a motion, a formal motion tonight, right? Because we're, we're just in a study session here, other than to ask you to, you know, to, uh, to go off in this direction, right?
Well, don't we want a formal motion so they can go to council? This is our third study session.
Yeah, so, but that, that, that's what you want from us is a motion so you can go to council, asking council to, uh, to direct you and the planning commission to do these things, correct?
Yes, so staff's request is that the commission make a motion if the commission would like the, the council to consider initiating zone changes. It's making a recommendation to, to, uh, council through a motion, identifying what sort of changes you'd like the council to consider initiating. And then any changes would have to come back to the planning commission.
So just to kind of, um, you know, uh, corral us or summarize into where I think we are right now. And of course, the, the commission is going to tell me if I'm on the right track or not, but just so that we can get closer to, to making this motion. Uh, I'm looking at these bullet points. That's what I'm focusing on. And it sounds like, you know, one, one point of the motion would be, I think, just what Chris, Chris was talking about, talking about, um, uh, having council direct staff to look into, uh, F A R and parking, uh, to maintain a mix of commercial, residential, retail while fulfilling the original goal of the general plan in that area. Another thing we might do is say, um, have the planning commission be the body direct at the plan, that the zoning ordinance change at the planning commission be the body to determine any height to that two-foot height, height extension. And then something about, um, having staff investigate parking, um, alternatives. And, um, and then the, um, look at, uh, doing a code change to clarify using the net lot standard. So that's, that, from our discussion, that's kind of what I'm hearing, but let me ask the, the commission, am I, am I on track there?
Chair Rui, I, I, I think you're pretty, pretty much there. Um, and for me, if I have to summarize it in one sentence, I would say, um, and I ask the city council to direct a staff to explore, um, revision of development standards of M U three point two to try to, um, try to achieve the desired, um, maximum, uh, F A R one point five. So flu, uh, me, including, but not limited to, you know, A, B, C, D, which is what we're talking about. In terms of the residential density, um, right now it's twenty-four units per net acre. Uh, I'd also like to see if we can raise that to thirty or even thirty-six. It really doesn't matter because F A R is that the one that caps the limit, you know?
Okay, well, I, I think staff kind of is getting our desires here. Um, so why don't I take a, take a role at making a motion? And incorporating that stuff, um, unless people want more discussion?
Go for it.
Okay, um, then I will, uh, move that we, um, ask staff to request of council that they direct staff uh, to address the M U three point two area in the following ways, or investigate changes to the M U three point two areas in the following ways. One is to, uh, suggest F A R and parking changes to maintain a mix of commercial, residential and retail in that area while fulfilling the goal of the general plan in that area. The second item would be to ask them to direct staff to change zoning ordinance, to adjust the, allow for the, for the discretion of adjusting the height ceiling as it currently stands and, and give the planning commission that discretion as opposed to city council. Item three is to ask staff to, uh, investigate allowing, uh, parking alternatives such, uh, in that area to allow, to support the goals of that first item that I mentioned. And the fourth item is to, um, have, ask city council to direct staff to investigate a code change where we focus on the net lot area standard for M U three point two as opposed to the gross standard. Does that do what you need it to do? Gabriel?
Yeah, that was, that was really good. Uh, that provides us what I think we need to, uh, to present something to, to council.
Okay, great. Well, there's the motion. Sir Second? Okay, motion by Rulin, second by Brown. Um, any further discussion on this? Commissioner Blackwell?
I have none.
Okay, Commissioner Wu?
I support the motion, aye.
Okay, all right, then I will, uh, I'll call the roll. I'm sorry, your mutes were off. I didn't know if you had more you wanted to, to ask. So I'll call the question. Commissioner Wu?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Blackwell?
Aye.
And Rulin votes aye, so passes four zero. Okay, I think we finally got this item off of our table, so.
Good job, Chris. Good job, Gabriel.
Yeah, good job. Thanks for laying it out like that for us.
This will, there are a lot of things more, I mean, we've got a lot of things coming in three point two right now, so I want to take. Uh, you know, and there's some other percolating rivers out there. You've got up and down the street, a couple applications there, you know, the, the coffee shop and all that. So maybe this one, the long haul, will maybe apply to three point one and some of the other areas that, when you take a look at it. I'd also tell you that the, with this current commission expiring on the thirtieth of June, you've got it anything like Valencia that's close in the hopper through D R S E, you gotta try to get it to us, especially if you've got known faces you're living at here, but that's okay. Good job, Chris, and good job, Gabriel.
Yeah, thanks a lot, guys. So we've got about thirteen minutes, so, um, I'll, uh, I'll declare us in recess until, um, seven P M. We'll see you at seven.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
I'm here.
You know what? Not really. It's it's get ready, zero, zero sugar.
Oh, no.
I don't know what's in it.
Hey, Commissioner Woo, would you mind saying the pledge of allegiance, leading us to the pledge of allegiance tonight?
No, thank you very much. I will do that.
We're just waiting for Mike. I think Bart might call into the meeting if he's able to. He's going to try, but we don't know if he's going to be here or not, and Chris will be missing this evening as well.
You know, and I'm not seeing who was the Brian? So I wonder if she thought the meeting is over.
Uh oh, you might want to give him a call.
Yeah, I'll do that.
First Commissioner Blackwell. Period.
I'm just gonna make sure our our acting city attorney didn't didn't think our meeting was over when we took an adjournment. So there we go. Great. Hello? Hi, Brian. Okay. I think we've got all the commissioners here that we know we're going to be here this evening, so I'm going to call the order, the regular meeting of the planning commission of the City of San Clemente, California for April seventh, twenty twenty one. Item number two on our agenda is the pledge. Commissioner Woo, could you please lead us in the pledge? And I will just remind people to go on mute.
Thank you. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item three is a roll call. Gabriel, could you call the roll, please?
Yes, Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Kaczynski is absent. Commissioner Crandall is absent. Chair Pro Tim Wu.
Here.
Vice Chair Blackwell.
I'm here.
And Chair Rulon.
Here. Next item is special orders of business. We have none. So item five is the minutes. We have two sets of minutes. Our first is the study session of March third. Are there any requests for changes or motions?
I move I move we approve.
Motion by Brown, second by, sorry, second by Blackwell. I'll call the roll. Commissioner Woo?
Hi.
Commissioner Brown?
Hi.
Commissioner Blackwell?
Hi.
And Rulon votes I. Measure passes unanimously four zero. And our next set of minutes are for the regular planning commission meeting of March third, twenty twenty one. And the motions are changes.
I move we approve.
Motion by Brown, all second, second by Rulon. Call the roll. Commissioner Woo?
Hi.
Commissioner Brown?
Hi.
Commissioner Blackwell?
Hi.
And Rulon votes I passes unanimously. Our next item is oral and written communications. Members of the public may address the commission on matters of public interest which pertain to the city and are not otherwise on the agenda. Speakers can submit their comments on agenda items to the planning commission electronically. Material may be emailed to www.sand-clemente.org slash P C public comment. Transmitted by three P M on planning commission meeting days is recommended. The planning commission is not permitted to discuss or take action on items that do not appear on the agenda. So Gabriel, do we have any public comments that first things that are not on the agenda tonight?
Yeah, Chairman, we received one comment. It seems to be related to item nine A, but they didn't indicate that on their their comments, so I'm just gonna read it since it wasn't identified.
Okay.
Pretty short. This comment is from Gary Mick McDaniel, and they requested it be read at the planning commission meeting. The topic is low income housing, and their comment is, as a resident in Marblehead, I highlight light. I oppose allowing the vacant land on Frontera West of Marblehead to be developed into low income housing. It will most certainly bring more crime to San Clemente. Allowing this to happen will not be good for our city. You need to reject any plans for low income housing anywhere within our city limits. That's the end of the comment.
Okay, thank you. Item seven is a consent calendar. We have no consent calendar items. So item eight is our public hearings. The public hearing process includes a staff presentation, a presentation by the applicant not to exceed ten minutes, and the public testimony not to exceed three minutes per speaker. Following closure of the public hearing, the planning commission will respond to questions raised during the hearing, discuss the issues, and act upon the matter by motion. And we have one public hearing item, fourteen oh nine South El Camino Real. And our planner Katie Crockett is going to be presenting that to us, so. You have the floor, Katie.
Thank you. Good evening. The proposed project this evening is for a new two-story office building at fourteen oh nine South El Camino Real. Because it's a new commercial building, it requires a site plan permit, and it requires a cultural heritage permit because it is in the architectural overlay. And oh, and I forgot, I do have a presentation this evening, Commissioner, so I'll I'll wait a sec for I T to pull that up. So next slide. Okay, so you can see the location highlighted here. It is at the northwest corner of Salpo Camino Real and West Avenue to Valencia, a budding exit seventy four southbound of the I five freeway. As such, this is a general plan designated gateway area. The other corners of the intersection include the vacant Top Tune site and also a vacant lot at fourteen thirty El Camino Real. The planning is currently reviewing a proposed two-story Spanish colonial revival building at the Top Tune site. Next slide. So this is the existing conditions at the site. The project includes the demolition of the vacant Tommy's Restaurant Building. The building was constructed in nineteen sixty three, and and we weren't sure if it could be a candidate as a historical structure due to the mid-century modern Googie style architecture. But the applicant did provide a historic building report prepared by Brian F. Smith and Associates, which concluded that the building is not historically or architecturally significant under any California Register of Historical Resources or City of San Clemente significance criteria for historic structures. And that was due to an overall lack of architectural integrity. And the report and the city, the city's city consultant's review of that report are included as attachment two of your report. And the city's consultant did concur with the conclusion of the applicant's consultant. Next slide. The overall project area is twenty four thousand four hundred six square feet. That includes an easement over a small portion of the property to the north along the parking lot. As previously mentioned, the existing restaurant building would be demolished to make way for the six thousand three hundred five square foot two-story office building. The first floor suite would be for Shoreline Dental, which is an existing local business. They currently have their office downtown on Avenue to Cabrillo. And then the smaller second floor suite would be for another office tenant. Next slide. As you can see on the site plan, the building is located along El Camino Real, along that street frontage and nearest to the intersection by the freeway off ramp with parking to the side of the building. This is consistent with general plan policies and design guidelines. The site includes an existing parking easement, which you can see there to the left of the slide. It's shown as parcel two, which is for five parking spaces is what the easement is for. As you can see, there are seven parking spaces within that easement. Only five of those seven are required to meet the parking requirement in the code. The project is required to provide twenty eight spaces. They provide thirty. So condition seven point fifteen requires continuation of the existing parking easement as a condition of project approval. Other modifications. Let's see, other modifications to the site also include moving the two existing driveways to the north away from the freeway exit, which helps promote increased safety, both for drivers and pedestrians. Next slide. Landscape is significantly improved from the existing development on the site, even when it was not vacant, which had almost no landscaping. The proposal includes landscape that includes twenty seven point five percent landscape coverage, which is more than double what is required. The large landscape area in front of the parking lot serves as both a biofiltration area for stormwater, which is required as a part of the W Q M P, and also serves as a landscape buffer between the sidewalk and the parking area, which is consistent with design guidelines. You'll notice along the bottom there, Washingtonia robusta palms, Mexican fan palms will be placed in new tree wells in the right of way at approximately thirty foot intervals. This is also consistent with design guidelines. In response to D R S C recommendations, this project was reviewed by D R S C twice. The applicant modified the placement and species of the trees utilized in the parking area, and they also added additional landscape along the retaining wall, which is to the left of the slide there. And to to kind of soften that retaining wall in the parking area, and they also added additional landscape along low landscape in front of the parking along the pedestrian arcade, which is kind of to the right of the parking area on that slide. Next slide. So this was, like I said, reviewed by D R S C. In addition to those landscape modifications, the applicant also incorporated other D R S C recommendations. They're listed here, some of them. I'll try to point them out also as we go on to review elevations. In this photo here, though, you can see several incorporated changes, including that they simplified the corner tower element. It does have the radius corners. It has a very deep set, deep set windows with that tile accent detail. And more detailed and correctly spaced rafter tails along that element as well. Next slide. So here you can see the street frontage El Camino Real on the top, the top of the slide, and the parking lot frontage along the bottom. Items to note here include the arcade along the parking lot frontage. In response to D R S C comment, the applicant aligned the windows and doors on the building with the arches of the arcade, which you can see there. The applicant also modified the style of railing at the second floor deck from a glass to a more traditional Spanish style with a stucco accent detail, which you can also see there. On the El Camino Real frontage towards the top, you can see some of the elements I mentioned with the tower modifications. They have vertically oriented windows with divided lights and black window earnings. Next slide. And so this is the rear inside of the building which faced the freeway off ramp. The windows are vertically oriented and deeply recessed, and more substantial wood corbels have been utilized than originally proposed at the slight overhang of that second story over. Um at the slight overhang of that second story over the first story. Um next slide. So overall, the project will be a welcome addition to this freeway gateway location. And it should also fit with the character and design of the proposed project across the street at the Top Tunes site. The project does meet development standards um as as shown in the report. And um is consistent with design guidelines and general plan policies. Therefore, staff recommends the commission approve the project with the conditions of approval as drafted. In resolution PC twenty-one zero zero seven and determine that the project. Is categorically exempt from further environmental review under CEQA. Since the report was drafted, staff has received many public comments in support of the project. Um which I believe Gabriel can read when we're ready for that portion of the hearing. Um this concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions. And several members of the applicant team are here, including Jared Dudley. Um should the commission have any questions for the applicant as well?
Very good. And does the applicant want to make a presentation or just to be available for questions?
Jared or Mark, did you want to say anything or Corey?
Uh yeah, you know what? This is Jared. Uh I was going to make some comments Katie, but you absolutely covered everything. So I really don't need to uh I don't need any uh further comment at this time. Thank you.
Great. Our staff members are doing their job as usual, so.
No, Katie has been absolutely dialed in on this project from the very beginning and we really appreciate that.
Very good. Then um I'll ask if any of the commissioners have questions of staff or the applicant. Okay, I don't see any questions. So we can then open the public hearing. And uh Gabriel, I know we've got a number of um public comment. So why don't you go ahead and read those and I'll I'll be the timer.
Okay, thank you Chairman. All right, the first comment is from. Ellie Lustness and. Oh wait, hold on. This one was requested not to be read to the records. We'll not read that. Um next one is uh. Colby Livingston and this comment is being fourth generation San Clemente residents. The Ritz-Sau family is dedicated to the longevity and well-being of San Clemente and its residents. With this new location in El Camino Real, the dedication can continue for generations to come. I am a general dentist and have had the pleasure of working alongside Kristen and Corey. Uh Ritz-Sau at Shoreline Dental Studios since two thousand sixteen. Their commitment to San Clemente is contagious, which inspired me to move here in two thousand sixteen and set roots in this amazing town. With this new building, we will be able to expand our care and commitment to San Clemente. This busy intersection will be revitalized and greatly improved, hopefully encouraging new business to follow suit. Please support this local homegrown business, Shoreline Dental Studio. Next comment is. Okay, another comment not to read into the record. Next comment. Next comment is from Eric and Stephanie Rose. And this comment reads, as neighbors to the property, you're a hundred percent behind the new project at the old Tommy's at fourteen oh nine South El Camino Real. We have had plenty of great memories eating at Tommy's. We miss them. However, the charm did not come from the building. It has always. Uh has always seemed like it didn't fit in our Spanish village by the sea. And it has been dilapidated and an eyesore for quite some time. Now the abandoned parking lot is currently being used by outsiders for blithering, drinking, other illegal activities. As a family that has grown up here in San Clemente. And now our kids have grown up here, we would love to see this property in the hands of a capable experience and local business owners. Shoreline Dental has not only cared for local and neighboring pa- patient patients, but they have also been overly generous and charitable in our local community. We have known Kristen Moore Ritz-Sau since she was a local high school student. We believe not only in the vision they have for the property and for our town, but more importantly, we believe in the Ritz-Sau's. We have uh sent many people to their dental practice because we know that they're professional and caring and fair. Everything that they have touched bears this same excellence. We ask that you take advantage of this opportunity by entrusting this property to the expertise of the Ritz-Sau's and Shoreline Dental. Please create a short runway for them to get through applying commissions so they can create something beautiful for all of us. That comment and. The next comment is from Jeannie Moore and it reads. I have been a resident since nineteen fifty-seven and have witnessed many changes in our beautiful town. I went to Las Palmas Elementary, graduated from San Clemente High School and worked as a RN in nearby hospitals. My family is one of four generations living and working in San Clemente. I drive past this location. Daily and feel the shoreline project would would be an ideal gateway to South San Clemente. I'm proud of my local businesses and would enjoy seeing this facility. As a welcome home when I pull off freeway at the end of the day. As a planning commissioner, your job is to protect and enhance the character of my hometown. That is exactly what this project does and hopefully act as and model to revitalize the entire area. Let's get this done now. Thank you, Jeannie Moore. Okay. And next comment um is from Rick Lofler and it reads, good evening, commission members. I would like to address the issue of Shoreline Dental's intention to develop the commercial property located at fourteen oh nine South El Camino Real. While I cannot fathom any reason the request would not be approved, I would like to comment on the matter. First of all, it is it is encouraging in the wake of COVID that we have a local business that is looking to expand. As opposed to close. Shoreline Dental is a family-owned and operated dental practice. Shoreline is a multi-time winner of the best in SC. In the dental practice category, Shoreline was also the current winner in the category of best customer service. Of any type of business. Impressive. This is the type of business we must encourage and keep in San Clemente. In addition to Shoreline's outstanding medical service, they also participate in numerous charitable programs. Many of which they initiated themselves. Shoreline has always been transparent in their support of our military and public safety entities. Dr. Kristen Ritz-Sau, San Clemente High graduate and first in her class at UCLA School of Dentistry. Dentistry and her husband, Office Manager Corey, have provided tremendous medical and community services to our city. San Clemente should do anything possible to ensure this uh that business like Shore. Trying dental thrives so that they can continue to provide their outstanding services to members of our community. Next comment is from Rosalind Gilmer and it reads, Derek Planning Commission, thank you for reviewing. The plans for the new prospective building at fourteen oh nine South El Camino Real. I have been to many city planning meetings in preparation of the newly established property that now stands at ten Santiago. And I know firsthand how grueling the planning process can be. My interest in the development of the few blocks surrounding this area is a very much priority for me considering. That I am a homeowner resident of West Avenida Santiago. Which is just a stone's throw away from the development being proposed today. Being a resident of San Clemente for over thirty-five years is important to me that the growth of our community. Is in line with the vision conceived by Ole Hanson himself. I have reviewed the plans for this development and find the design to not only be attractive, but surprisingly in line with the feeling of the Spanish village by the sea. Much more so than the rundown diner that stands in the dislocation as an eyesore and rest stop for residents. I'm hoping to see more peaceful developments take place. The numerous empty lots and closed business establishments at this stretch of South El Camino Real. The founder of the business submitting these plans for approval as part of the family has been part of the San Clemente community. Since the nineteen fifties and is invested in making our community better. She donates to our schools as well as our veterans and runs. Her business with integrity, delivering only the highest level of patient care in her practice. Everyone deserves quality dental care from someone. Who has excellent core values and this larger building will allow for more members of our community to receive that care sooner than later. Please consider approving this project as a step forward in making our city a little bit more beautiful. And our community be more connected with each other. And uh that's the end of the comments that we received that requested to be read at the planning commission meeting.
Okay, very good. Thank you. So I will close the public hearing. And I'll open this up for discussion of the planning commission. Any um Commissioner Brown?
Uh yeah, very impressed with the project. And Katie did report a massive amount of uh historical review and peer review. Interesting reading there. Um but I think the project's come along very well. The DRSC did a very good job, uh. Along with the applicant aligning everything, the Spanish colonial revival architecture. So I'm very supportive of the project and uh. You know, hopefully it uh comes to pass. My only concern, I think. Katie, maybe it should have been for the applicant, is the easement. Has uh the applicant or talked with the the owner of the property so that the easement can be maintained because. We had this issue downtown with Zaws and they were, we conditioned it to be even be maintained. And the owner next door decided not to be cooperative and it took them two or three years. So the Zaws can soon move forward. So where where do we stand on that?
Yes, actually, that's a good question. Um the easement is um. Uh it's existing and they don't need to change it. Um however, the applicant did already reach out to the adjacent property owner who has been responsive. And um they have seen the plans. They've actually been working with Mal Richardson, the our um assistant city attorney. Uh to draft uh sort of a separate agreement, just to make clear that that property owner of the easement is. Okay with all of the improvements that the applicant will be doing on that easement since. Uh the easement specifies five parking spaces and they're actually building. A retaining wall and seven parking spaces and a little bit of landscape. So um they have been active in reaching out to the applicant and we have seen. Their approval.
Excellent. Thank you very much. So I saw the only comments I've had. I'm very supportive of the project, but thank you very much, Katie.
Hey Commissioner Blackwell.
Yes Jim, thank you. Um well, I definitely see the benefits of the thorough um design review and the benefits of a cooperative applicant. Clearly, there's um intention here to to um. You know, fit into the community and the applicants clearly listened to the recommendations that have been made. And I think the project looks great and I think it's gonna work well. Uh Commissioner Brown's um point is important. Regarding that uh that agreement between parties and and Jim, I think that, you know. Well, first of all, wait, Katie, is there a condition that requires that agreement to be in place to this project? I didn't see that in the.
Yes, um there are a couple of different conditions. So condition three point one eight. Um states prior to issuance of grading permits, the applicant shall submit to the city. Property owner approval for the improvements to be constructed within the existing parking easement. Um so that that's literally just for the the grading work, the retaining wall, the parking striping that they'll be doing. And then additionally, we tweaked planning standard condition number seven point one five. To specifically include um the existing easement being maintained. Uh it says maintenance of the existing parking easement, five spaces is required as a condition of this approval. If the easement is modified or terminated or subsequent to the project approval, the city planner determines that parking issues are negatively affecting. I won't read the whole thing because it's kind of long, but it's there. So you can review it and and let me know if that looks like what you were thinking of.
No, uh based on what you just read and your confirmation that would be consistent with what you've had. Summarized in your response to Commissioner Brown, I am super comfortable with this, with this project. I I think it's great. It has uh gone a distance and all of the concerns that the design review subcommittee had have been addressed. Uh meets all of the architectural intention, especially along this corridor. And uh so I'm in full support of the project.
Okay, Commissioner Will.
Yes, I like this project. Uh the applicant is very, has been very cooperative with the review, what you guys thought of it. I support it.
Okay, thank you. Um I'll chime in for a moment. Um I certainly don't want to repeat my uh my fellow commissioners, but I I do think this is uh looks like a great project. Very happy to see something this nice go into that part of town. This is just the sorts of things that we've been looking for. So. Um I'm certainly in uh in support of it as well. So with that, um I don't see uh anyone else off of mute. Um does anyone, would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Get to the page of it and uh. I move. I move that we uh approve the planning commission resolution PC twenty-one dash zero zero seven. The resolution of planning commission of the city of San Clemente, California approving site plan permit. Twenty dash one thirty-four and cultural heritage permit twenty dash one thirty-five. Shoreline Dental, a request to demolish an existing single-story restaurant and build a two-story commercial building. For the approximately six thousand square feet of gross floor area for a dental office and a dental office. For forty-nine fourteen oh nine South El Camino Real.
Second. Motion by Brown, second by Wu. I'll call the roll. Uh Commissioner Wu?
Hi.
Commissioner Brown?
Hi.
Commissioner Blackwell?
Hi.
And ruling votes aye, passes for zero. Congratulations.
Good luck, good job.
Thank you.
And our our next item, thank you Katie. Um our next item is uh new business and we have an item under new business are. Our housing sites strategy. Um our planner, um Jennifer Savage is gonna take uh take take us through that. Uh before I turn it over to her, though, I just wanted to take a quick minute. Um it's based on. Some of the uh public comments that we've received so far. I wanted to give a bit of context in terms of where we are right now. This is actually the first meeting we're having to discuss any zoning changes uh for low-income housing. With regards to our uh housing element. And probably the way that this will go is this is our first meeting where we. Get uh get some information from Jennifer and from the public and we'll discuss it. We'll provide some input uh and direction for staff. And they'll come back to the planning commission in the future with uh more precise ordinances, recommendations, things like that. Uh I'm sure we'll have at least one more uh meeting uh to follow up from this. And with whatever recommendation we end up providing to city council, they'll of course have a public meeting for that as well. Uh one thing we're not doing here is we're not voting on any ordinances. We're not voting on any specific pro- uh project. There is no. Um no low-income housing project before us. And after we make all of these sorts of ordinance and plan, potential ordinances and plan changes. Um if someone then put in an application for a project uh for low-income housing. That's a whole nother process where we would have further public hearings to discuss that particular project. So if you're listening in and you've provided some public input because you wanted to make your perspectives known early on. You're in the right place at the right time because this is sort of our entry point to it. And with that, I'll I'll encourage Gabriel and Jennifer to correct any factual, anything I got factually wrong with that. Um but uh otherwise, I'll turn it over to Jennifer so she can give us staff's presentation. So floor is yours, Jennifer.
Thank you Chair and uh for that correct background uh context and good evening to the commissioners as well. Uh Jennifer Savage, senior planner with the city of San Clemente. And I will give IT just a couple more mon- moments to pull up the PowerPoint for item A nine A. Thank you. And next slide please. So this evening, uh staff will go over a brief background of the housing element. Talk about our regional housing needs assessment. Uh the bulk of the discussion will be the housing site strategy and we'll touch on the housing sites survey. And also talk about milestones. Next slide please. So the housing element is part of the city's general plan and the housing element plans for housing and housing services. And it's good to note that it plans for um housing at all income levels. So it's not just affordable housing. But it also plans for market rate housing. Both new market rate housing and how to preserve the existing housing here in the city. Uh it's important to note that um the housing element is required to be updated every eight years and our next cycle is. Uh in progress and is due October fifteenth of this year. Next slide please. So the regional housing needs assessment, also known as ARENA, R H N A. And it provides. And it provides a number of housing units that each jurisdiction across the state of California has to plan for. And this table here is from your staff report. It is for our next housing element update known as the sixth cycle. And you'll notice on the left hand side, there's a column labeled for the income category. And this illustrates the four income categories that the total number of housing units are split between and that the city has to plan for. So those include very low, low, moderate and above moderate. And you'll notice that the largest category is above moderate at thirty five percent of our total units. Now, the city doesn't have to build these units, but we do have to plan for the units and we do this through the housing element. A little bit of background about affordable housing in San Clemente in the past. Next slide, please. So this slide compares two maps. I realize that they're probably pretty small, especially depending on what device you're watching. They will be available on our website for better viewing. But the map on the left shows all of the affordable housing units that were built since nineteen eighty. Some of the, the, the time limits for maintaining those affordable units have passed. And you'll notice on the right identifies all the locations of affordable housing units that are still considered affordable. We have about almost five hundred spread throughout the city. Next slide, please. We also wanted to point out that the city currently has an affordable housing overlay. And this is largely along El Camino Real. And it's where housing is permitted if the project provides fifty one percent of the units. At very low income or for very low income households. And the two images you see here are part of the one larger map, but just split up so that they fit on the slide. And so again, affordable housing is not the only type of housing that we are required to plan for. Next slide, please. As part of our housing element update, we actually have to plan for all income levels. And the housing element is our plan that identifies where housing could be built in the future. And San Clemente is largely built out and there is a need to rezone for housing opportunities for these planning opportunities. Next slide, please. So as it relates to our need to rezone, we can assume two things. One is we can assume some of the previous sites that we've identified in previous housing elements. If we allow development with a smaller amount of affordable units, say twenty percent of the units in a project. At affordable levels. And then we can also assume that eighty U's with the increased interest that we've seen here in San Clemente. Will continue to be built and these eighty U's count towards our housing units and they actually count towards all income levels. So taking these two assumptions into account. We will, we would need to rezone for approximately six hundred housing units. If you'll recall a previous slide. There are arena number is nine hundred and eighty two, excuse me. But we have to rezone for only about six hundred housing units. So one way to accomplish rezoning for this amount of housing is to use a housing overlay. Which is not the same as the affordable housing overlay, but rather this housing overlay would consider housing at all income levels. Including housing for above moderate households. It would specify specific sites which would maintain their base or existing zoning designation. And then the housing overlay would actually not change the existing uses, but would provide the opportunity to add. Or redevelop for housing, depending on the market, the interest of the property owners and other factors. The sites you see on the draft list may or may not remain. The city does not need to rezone all of those sites. However, to me are very low and low arena numbers, we will have to rezone some sites, not necessarily those that you see in your list. But rezone some sites to allow a density of at least thirty units per acre. And the reason being is that the state allows us to count sites for the very low and low income households. When and only when they allow at least thirty units per acre. So this brings us to our key goal for tonight. Next slide, please. And that's feedback. So this is our first opportunity to gather feedback from the planning commission on housing sites or our housing site strategy. Our first opportunity to discuss the draft sites with the public had a very low attendance rate, which was our second housing element community workshop. And so the city published a survey to gather input on some of the sites that we had pulled together. To start the conversation and gather considerations for those sites. And I'll discuss the results of that survey in just a moment. The staff report that you have this evening discusses some areas for planning commission feedback. Those include the constraints and limitations of the list of sites that you have drafted. Additional sites that should be considered. And then what residential density should be considered for potential sites. If the planning commission has other feedback on potential sites and rezoning, this evening is the time to provide that input as well. So what assumptions should the planning commission make on providing feedback this evening? One assumption is density. Keep in mind that we do have lower income categories that can only be accommodated on sites. That are zoned for at least thirty dwelling units per acre. So we will have to rezone some sites at a higher density. That being at least thirty dwelling units per acre. On that density note, keep in mind that thirty units per dwelling acre is actually less than the city's existing residential high or R H zoning designation. A second assumption is that the list for potential rezoning ultimately included in the housing element. May consist of some sites and zoning from the draft list's higher density strategy. It may consist of some from the lower density strategy. And it may even consist of sites that are not yet on the draft list. Again, the start of this conversation. Another assumption is how the feedback will be used. So how will your feedback be used this evening? It will inform the housing element update, specifically the draft, which will contain a list for the city to consider rezoning. The housing element will not include adoption of rezoning. Rather, it would include a program to rezone. Sites in the future. And part of that program would be to consider further those sites to do some additional analysis. The planning commission and the public will have additional opportunities to comment on the draft sites as well as the housing element, as you mentioned in the beginning. Keep in mind that this is a conversation we will continue to have over the next few months. And staff is exploring additional outreach efforts and opportunities for feedback. So let's go over the survey and upcoming milestones. Next slide, please. So staff published a survey in February of this year. We published press releases and social media posts to advertise the availability of the survey. But because responses were so low and we really wanted to get public input, we did make a special presentation to the city council. That special presentation resulted in a significant amount of additional public input on our survey, which is great. We ended that survey on March twenty sixth. That survey asked about draft areas and sites around the city as well as density for those sites. And these sites are included in the staff report this evening. However, sites A and X were removed. Next slide, please. We received six hundred and seventeen responses on the survey, which is great. Thank you. The first question asked what areas should be considered for housing and provided five areas with a sixth option of another category. Seventy three percent of the respondents chose South El Camino Real, Tulaga specific plan area and the other category. About half of the responses in the other category said none of the areas should be considered and that no additional housing should be added. For questions two through eleven, we asked about density for the draft sites. In addition to removing sites A and X, the results show that the majority of respondents don't want to change the zoning for any of the sites. Depending on the site, between fifty five and seventy six percent of respondents chose no rezoning. Over the other options of medium or high density zoning. Question twelve asked about other sites that the cities should consider. Several respondents suggested no other sites or were not supportive of additional housing in San Clemente. And specific site suggestions included, but were not limited to the city owned property. Including that along La Pata, currently open space downtown properties, including old commercial areas. South El, South San Clemente and apartments in North San Clemente. The survey results will be posted on our housing element webpage in the coming weeks. Next slide, please. So key milestones, the feedback that we get both on the housing. I'm sorry, the housing site survey that's closed, public comments that come in as a result of that. As well as this evening's meeting and any public comments will help inform the draft housing element. Which will come back to the planning commission in May as well as the city council in May. And this is the draft. This is the draft housing element. So it's another opportunity in our longer conversation. About the housing element update and housing opportunities throughout the city. Then in the summer, the environmental, the draft environmental impact report or draft E I R. Will be released for public circulation and comments. And we will, along with that, be continuing our conversation about the draft housing element. And then in the fall, the housing element would come back to the planning commission and the city council for adoption. To meet our deadline of October fifteenth. Next slide, please. Thank you for your patience and attention while we went over these topics. We do want to open it up next to why we are here this evening, your feedback. Next slide, please. We have a few areas of considerations displayed on the slide, but this does conclude staff presentation and we are available for any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's see, Commissioner Brown, looks like you have a question.
You mentioned a percentage that wanted South El Camino Real to find. South El Camino Real, is that south of the I five? And then in that particular zoning area or is it from? South El Camino Real starts at Del Mar and goes south. Where specific coming South El Camino Real was this area in the survey focused on.
Yeah, so it was, it was Del Mar was the delineation. Where the street name actually becomes South El Camino Real.
From Del Mar to Christian Needles. That was what the survey indicated. That was a good place to put it all.
And it was, the survey wasn't indicating that it was a good place, but of the five identified areas, that was one of the top choices. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Do you have a contractor that's going to help you with this draft element or is the staff going to do it all?
There is a consultant preparing the housing element.
Okay, the last time we used like Victoria Tam, I don't know if you're reusing her, she was very good, but you do have a. You have a consultant help you. Thank you.
Yes.
Thanks, Commissioner Wu.
Yes, John Tampa, I think this was a great presentation. I only hope that. For the survey, there's a preamble similar to, to the introduction made by. Chair Rui and all you. So that can reduce a lot of anxiety for residents. With that said, I have, just have a few questions for you to clarify. Above moderate housing is, they are market rate housing, that's true.
I'm sorry, above market rate housing, what?
Above moderate. Category, the housing. In that category, they are not affordable housing, they're not, they are market driven, they're market rate housing.
Correct.
So the really the low income housing we're looking at, two hundred eighty two plus one hundred sixty four. Total four hundred forty six.
Plus, moderate is considered affordable housing. So you would add those as well, but above moderate would be considered market rate.
Right, motors is considered affordable housing, but I keep hearing people. Referring to low income housing and that would, that would have referred to low income and a very low income.
Yes, those are the lower income categories.
A lot of response says no additional housing in the city at all. Is that a viable option?
Not from a planning perspective. So the state does require us to update our housing element and plan for housing units. Whether those housing units actually are constructed will ultimately depend on the market.
What about rezoning? Can, can the objective be achieved without a rezoning?
No, not at this time.
And the reporter mentioned that there's some limit about reusing the existing housing. You know, affordable housing overlay or, or existing inventory. Can you explain to us what are, what those limits are? And why we need to have a separate. Housing overlay to achieve this goal for the, for the latest cycle.
Yeah, so there's two parts to that question. One is using existing or previous sites. And then the second one is preserving existing affordable units. So. The first one in terms of using existing sites in the past housing cycles, we've been able to reuse, if you will, existing sites. So if we had identified, say, site one was identified as potential housing site. At whatever income level, we were able to use it in multiple housing element updates. State law changed recently where we can't use those sites without making some modifications to the zoning. And so in this instance, there are several housing sites that were on our fourth and fifth cycle housing element list. And those we can reuse if we ensure that their zoning or we, we rezone those sites. To allow housing developments at, through a ministerial approval with at least twenty percent affordable units. And when we say affordable, that's very low, low or moderate income units. So that's, so existing sites, the law changed and the law specifically says you have to allow at least twenty percent affordable.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and then if you wanted me to just quickly answer the second part in terms of preserving existing housing units. That could also count towards some of our housing units. And there. There, I think it's six units are, would become eligible to not be affordable in twenty twenty five. And we would identify that in our housing element. And so those, I believe it's six units could count towards our total. Housing units if we were able to successfully preserve those as affordable units.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Blackwell.
Yes, thank you. So the commission is aware, I had. Taken attachment to, it's one of the exhibits that were, was included in the. In Jennifer's presentation. And that exhibit. Shows the areas in red that were, you know, being considered. As part of this presentation. And what I had done was I highlighted. Just taking a look at a lot of different areas around town and highlighted some, some areas. I just really wanted to put a, a question out there. And that was, you know, whether, whether we looked at other locations like, you know, city golf course. I mean, I can go on, it's a long list. And I think for the sake of this, this evening's presentation, it was really more of a. You know, have we. Considered and the viability of any and all opportunities in town. And I think that list would just go on and on and it'd be a very long discussion. So I think. For the sake of, as you had mentioned, Mr. Rui, and this will be an ongoing conversation. We're very early in the discussion. And I was looking at what other cities have done. And Mission Viejo, for example, you know, brought in some housing at a golf course. Whether or not it was low income or whatever the structure was, it was housing that was brought in. You know, we've also got, you know, some industrial business park use here off of La Pata. That we've looked at during our S B two discussion. And thinking of other cities that have gone through a. And thinking of other cities that have gone through a cycle in their industrial zones, have been converted into housing. Again, you know, whether or not it's affordable or not, setting that aside for now, but it may be a percentage of it could be. And then I was thinking about, you know, how COVID nineteen has, has impacted the workplace and how we use space. And this is a point that's been, you know, brought up during various discussions during COVID that this commission's had. And I think it's still valid. And my question to Jennifer is is there an opportunity to survey some of maybe the property management in those areas, maybe the industrial business park areas, you know, above, above La Pata in that, in that area there? And to see what the occupancy rates are, and what the occupancy rates are anticipated to be going into the, the next year. And we'd be doing that to sort of get a discussion going about how space is being used and how it's anticipated. Are folks wanting to stay on their leases? Are they still utilizing their workspace the way they used to, or has a percentage of their workforce left? And not intended to come back or anticipate to come back anytime soon? And whatever that discussion yields, is there now a lot of square footage that could potentially be utilized? And if so, that's, you know, that would be a discussion about underutilized space and how to use it as opposed to, say, down in, in the Lowes Center there, where that space is, for the most part, fully utilized. So that's an overlay zone, and it makes sense. You know, all the models would, would definitely, you know, point to an area of, of land like this. But if that space is successful, it's just successful land use. You know, we've got Walmart, we've got Albertsons, we've got Lowe's. You know, the big anchors there are still, you know, fully functional, and they're utilizing their space in their parking. Where would we put any potential, you know, potentially put any, any new housing? And what's more attractive, that, or maybe some, some of the underutilized, you know, space up in the industrial area? Like industrial, commercial, business park areas. So that's my question. Is that something that could be considered? And then work on this plan over time?
Of course, definitely something we could consider. There are considerations for that consideration, and that's the capacity of, of staff to do that. Not only from a cost perspective, if you were talking about something, doing something like a mailer, but also whether, from a capacity standpoint, if that would reveal anything. So we certainly can't force property owners or operators to provide us that information. But there may be some other opportunities to get that. There are real estate data files that we could explore if we have access to those. So that was a longer answer to, yes, that's something we could explore. Keep in mind that San Clemente isn't a very large city. We don't have a lot of industrial land opportunities. We don't have multiple areas, if you will. So unlike larger cities with a variety of industrial or job-centered areas, using the industrial area to provide for housing instead of, say, job opportunities shouldn't be taken lightly. And that is one reason we didn't look at a large area of industrial land. We do want to maintain the industrial opportunities and job opportunities we currently have.
Commissioner Blackwell, and I, I have asked one of the real estate agents for industrial parks in the city to like, to mention San Clemente. This was a while back, so they had mentioned that the, the vacancy rate was six point two percent for both business parks. But that was July. I assume it's probably similar, but because that was the time where COVID, you know, was, was impacting the city.
Okay, and that's great, Gabriel. That's fantastic news that one, staff is thinking like that, and two, that there was action taken. I, I think it's safe to say that there's been, you know, normalization, if you will. You know, many, many, at least many large companies have already sort of standardized their protocols in terms of workforce in-office percentages. And I would venture to say that that's probably pretty consistent, you know, across the board, you know, percentage of, you know, there's been discovery, in other words. Many businesses have found that their, their productivity and profitability can still be attained with a percentage of their workforce working from home remotely versus being in the office, you know. And naturally, that would, that tells us that the, the square footage needs are just going to be different. And it's not going to be a hundred percent application in every case, but there's still going to be, you know, I think it's safe to say there would be a percentage of space that just would not be used, and were not needed anymore. So it may be a discussion that's a little, a little premature at this point, as we, you know, get back into you know, our regular tiering, and as our colors change, you know, and, you know, folks get back into a, a regular, you know, pace. I think we'll, we'll start to have an idea what that cadence truly looks like soon, but maybe not now. And I, I happen to know there are many businesses, you know, in the business park above city, city hall.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Commissioner Blackwell, I think I have some questions. I, it looks like Commissioner Brown has some questions. So unless you've got a specific question right now, we can move on to the commissioners and circle back to you.
Are we talking to staff still, Mr. Rui?
Yeah, we're in the human action right now, yeah.
Right, so I was still addressing my question to, to Jennifer, but I, I will, I will yield that time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Don, you had another question?
Yeah, Jennifer, for a feedback, there is about several two hundred acres site in the business park, referred to as the Meadow. It's totally undeveloped, up there above where you were, City Hall. It was bought by a family from the residential tract in the late nineteen eighties. It's, it's braided, it's level and undeveloped in the business park. Multiple city managers and community development people have reached out to this family over the last forty years. And they resisted any urging or probing or whatever. They've owned it, and because it's, the tax base is low, they, it's there. And it's very prime area where it's near in the business park, which could make, you know, affordable housing wonderful, where people could live there and work, walk to the business park literally to work. That's an undeveloped piece of land out there that you should explore or look into, or become knowledgeable of for you and the city staff. The second question I really have, I looked at the various sites here, you've done very targeted. Every shopping mall has been targeted, so to speak. You know, Targets on it, Pico Plaza's on it, with the Lowe's Shopping Center, some other areas up off La Pata near Heritage Church. Very focused, I guess, like empty parking lots you could build around it. I'm not quite sure what your opinions were on that. It's very high-value property. You, you would propose an overlay over it so you could build affordable housing around the periphery of it? Is that what you had in mind? As far as, let's say, take Lowe's or take Pico or take Target or whatever. What was the staff intent by calling out those properties, as far as that was concerned?
Yeah, good question. So staff and the consultant were looking at opportunities for housing that didn't necessarily use, say, vacant property, because San Clemente is so built out. In addition to the fact that San Clemente wants to protect its open space. So if we consider the fact that we have very few vacant parcels, and that we do want to protect our open space, that then lends itself to looking at surface parking lots. And the reason for that is that there may be an opportunity to use those surfing, surface parking lots to build above, perhaps. Sorry.
Someone has motion sensors in the office.
We're dark in our office right now.
So it, it, there's an, there's potentially an opportunity for surface parking lots to become an area that might support housing. And again, it's not necessarily affordable housing. The, the area that encompasses the Lowe's, Walmart, Office Depot, that shopping center could, wouldn't count towards our low or very low income units. Because the proposed density there would be less than those thirty units per acre. But going back to your original question about surface parking lots, it was just an opportunity to have that discussion is maybe that's where the city should consider allowing housing opportunities in the future.
You, you do this via the overlay? And they would be built around the periphery, periphery of the shopping center? If the shopping center parking numbers, having gone through some of those shopping centers in their development, were very vigorously, you know, computed and fought over and and everything else, and drawn in blood over the years. So and a parking structure is very prohibitive. You know, the last parking structure study we have, Walker, which is a parking structure at the library, it was around fifty to fifty-five thousand dollars to stall because of earthquake requirements and all. So I don't know, if the consultant was thinking parking structures to alleviate it, that's, that's very, very provocative. So I, I really have a hard time using my hands around what you're trying to do with shopping centers.
Yeah, so neither the design nor the location was part of the assumption. Again, it's just an, it's an opportunity to look at, if we're not looking at vacant sites, because we don't have very many, and we're, we're trying to not change our open space, where else could we look? And so surface parking lots might be an opportunity, but you are presenting a valid questions about the design, the location, and, and cost effectiveness.
The last question I have in ways the affordable housing overlay was very targeted up and down El Cuny real. And when we did that in twenty, two thousand eleven, this evolution you say is not to be a part of, but it was very targeted along. I guess for a concept, I would say to me, and that'd be for other commissioners to discuss along with staff, was to kind of grow on it, even though that was very targeted on El Cuny real, is take this overlay and not necessarily targeted at open space. I know we were looking for thirty acres per unit for the low and very low moderate. But to broaden out your, your proposed overlay over greater parts of the city, along the normal commercial corridors, in other words, spread it out, make it more universal, and, and maybe provide opportunities that way. That's a concept I would throw out, rather than put a spotlight on Target or a spotlight on Pico Plaza is to, is to spread it out over a, a, a larger area.
Thank you. Yeah, that's a great suggestion to incorporate into our Housing Element program. Thank you.
I've got a couple of questions. One is, you talked about, we're going to have to increase our density in some areas to at least thirty units per acre. And if we do that, is that when, when we, if we rezone that, an area that's currently less than that, to be at least that, would that be only for low-income housing, like as an overlay, or would it apply to any new structures built there?
That is a great question. So the part about the density and it's counting towards very low and low comes from the planning part of housing. So the rule from the state is that we have to identify sites based on income level, which means if we have two hundred very low income units, we have to make sure that the sites we identify as housing opportunities have the opportunity to build the two hundred very low income units. At the same time that we have to identify the sites with the income level, the state says for those very low income units, the site has to accommodate at least thirty units, dwelling units per acre. Now, that's the planning piece. But what isn't required at this point is the actual construction. So just because the Housing Element designates those sites as a very low housing income opportunity, it doesn't limit that site to very low income housing. We do build, there's a mechanism where if a site is designated as very low income, not designated, but identified as a housing opportunity for very low housing units, if those very low housing units are not built, we do, the city does have to find another site that could accommodate the very low. But still, that original site doesn't have to be built at very low housing.
And, oh, sorry, go ahead, Gabriel.
I was gonna say, would, would, would maybe the Shortcliffs apartment project be a good example, like that site designated for potential affordable housing, and it was established with a certain density, it would change. And then ultimately, the project was a market rate project. And so we had to make findings, right, that the known net loss findings that that there would still be adequate sites in our site inventory to accommodate the affordable units in that inventory, right? So that would be something similar. So, so are.
So, so, so it would be, it is what it is. It would be that density regardless of the application. But if the application, for instance, was for not a low income unit, they wanted to have less density, we could do that if we made that finding.
Correct.
But until then, it would be that density. Okay, great, thanks. You also mentioned there's going to be an EIR with this, I guess, an EIR of the Housing Element. And, you know, we've got a whole EIR for the general plan. So is this essentially an amendment to that EIR? Or, you know, how does that work? Because I would have thought the, the general planning EIR really covers most of the things we do in the city. So.
Yeah, so the, the EIR for the Housing Element update, because of the, the scope of the considerations that we have to review, especially in regards to considering potential sites for rezoning, really lends itself to doing a full EIR. Now, it is a programmatic EIR, so it builds upon the general plan EIR, and then allows us, when, when and if we are following a rezoning program, allows us to build upon the EIR for the Housing Element. So it allows us to layer, and it'll be part of a layer for the general plan EIR.
Okay, great. So kind of the, it sounds like kind of the assumption is, is that this Housing Element is now going to make assumptions, by assumptions for a higher density, for instance, that were not made in the general plan. And that's why we need to have this new EIR, new EIR layer. Is that somewhat correct?
Very correct.
Let's see. And do we know with the, the shopping centers, I know we've got a couple of shopping centers that, that we highlighted. It looks to me like, at least with the Lowe's, for instance, and Target, because they're building something at Target, they, this might not be the case with them anymore. But we do have some shopping centers where it appears that the, that they're overparked. Lots of open spaces, especially farther away from the buildings. And I, do, have we done any investigation yet to see, kind of, you know, that's sort of an informal, looking around kind of thing? Have we done an investigation to see if they are, in fact, overparked and can afford to lose a certain number of spaces if some housing were to be built, say, in a portion of the parking lot?
No, in fact, we, we haven't done any parking counts, and we're certainly not making any assumptions that they are overparked. Rather, it's really as part of the conversation, talking about opportunities to add to the site, not necessarily. opportunities to add to the site, not necessarily remove parking from the site. So again, we don't know the design or the location, but what we've seen throughout California and even in other states as well is that when you reuse a site for housing, there's the potential to maintain the uses, maintain the retail, the commercial spaces, maintain the number of parking spaces that are there for those commercial uses and then add to the site. And again, the design, you know, the design varies. But we're not implying that there is an opportunity from an overparking perspective to add housing.
Okay. I did have a couple of questions about we we got some public comment about a couple of other sites. I'm going to ask you about them. If you'd rather that we cover them when we get into discussion about the specific sites, that's fine. But there was one, well, I'll ask about both of them. There was a two point two nine acre site, the surplus land site the city has considered doing a gas station at. There was some question about including that site in as as part of our potential inventory and also the ten acre Pico site currently owned by the Emergency Shelter Coalition. Was that something that was investigated and decided that that was unfeasible? Or is that are those still sites that are potentials for being included in this?
Yeah, there are certainly sites that you can suggest to include. There there are reasons that they weren't. So the one that sat the corner of La Plata that because the city was so far through the process of taking in proposals and so close to perhaps bringing one of those proposals on board, we felt it would not be productive to identify that site for housing. And then in terms of the other site that the Emergency Shelter Coalition owns, Gabriel might be able to confirm this, but I believe that that particular area is identified for another use. Is there a road or a trail partially on that property? Sorry, Commissioner Brown?
I think it's designated open space. That's why.
Okay.
I thought that was the case, but I wasn't certain. Yeah.
I'm about to give measure V, the Earl ordinance, measure V, to even consider that.
So, yeah, yeah, there's there's anything that's covered by measure V is going to be a little impractical. So they are difficult, I should say. All right, I think those are my questions for now. Commissioner Woo, did you have additional questions?
I do. Yeah. So a couple of questions for the target aside, we know that target site is fully developed, given that they just proposed and received planning commission approval for additional development. How do you think that's a practical site to add as a housing area?
Yeah, so we did consider that and we thought that maybe there might be an opportunity to still incorporate some housing, just given the the spread of the surface parking on that site. And maybe there's not, maybe that is impractical, but we did want to put that out there that maybe there was a way to to incorporate housing on that site, given the the availability of land space, if you will, from a surface parking perspective.
Okay, for for the site V and W at the end of Pico and the currently they are they're zoned as the open space, although they the purpose was to accommodate the previously planned tow road intersection, now they're gone. So reversed back to open or regardless, it's a still open space. However, the the measure V and the subsequent ordinance has some exception for the city council to make a decision to accommodate affordable housing, I believe, based on some finding. Have you checked with the city planner to see if the rezoning of these two parcels, V and W, one is open space and another one is open space, half open space, half commercial? Do they need to go to a ballot measure or can exception be used to rezon?
Yeah, so the those sites W and V may be less viable than other sites. That exception that you speak to in the measure V ordinance is very specific when it comes to making those exceptions. And it does speak to housing required by the state. But it does specify that when it that it might be allowed only when it's the the only option. And so at this point, we do think that there might be other options to consider. So that definitely completely removes site W from, you know, future lists if we do find other sites to identify. Site V at the time of of measure V, part of that was commercial. So there's a little bit more opportunity on site V. And that would be specifically on the area that was designated commercial, not open space at the time of measure V. But again, like you said, it is currently open space, so it may be one of those sites that that maybe we take off the table at this point.
Well, also beyond B and W into outside of city boundary where the Crista Anita's road is and a site that's next to the existing Mendocino. If you if you go a little further toward north and toward east, there's some land that appear to be suitable and then next to existing affordable housing development that outside of a boundary have is feasible have to to explore a possibility of acquire this land and incorporating to the city or annex them for the for the for the housing need.
Is this outside Crista Anita's, you said?
At, yeah. At the end of Pico, right next to next to the parcel to the north of it, either V or W.
Okay, yeah. You're talking about planning area eight, which would be a beautiful lot.
No, not 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 into eighty yet, but immediately next to the parcel we're proposing.
Yeah, so on annexing land, that's not currently.
Next to W, next to the parcel W.
Okay, yeah, if we were to annex land, certainly you could consider that for housing. The difficulty with that is that when you when the city takes in additional land, we then have to add additional housing units we have to account for. So it's not, it wouldn't clearly be accommodating the units that we have to accommodate for. If we take in, say, five acres, just for the sake of conversation, you know, would those five acres require a hundred housing units and only accommodate a hundred housing units? We don't know that. But it's just taking in land doesn't cover the housing units. It would also add housing units to our our allocation.
And I think, you know, if because the land wouldn't be in the city at this time, it would still need to go through a process of being annexed into the city through LAFCO. There isn't a guarantee that that land would be in the city. So that might not help for this housing element cycle. But I'm thinking that would probably have to be something that we look to in the future for future cycles.
Sure will help for the next cycle, if you got it.
Okay, finally, another another question is to accommodate those additional housing, especially the nonaffordable housing portion of it, the market rate. Can't we simply upzone our, for example, I I just put it out there for our current residential median density? And they are, if they're twenty-four units per acre, we can we raise it to twenty-six, twenty-eight, whatever the number is, that can yield the required additional housing unit. Is that feasible? I know it involves the general plan amendment, but it's going to involve general plan amendment anyway. Can that be done?
Yes, that's certainly something that we consider, could consider. Steph did explore that with the consultant and the the difficulty there is because of the new state laws requiring a lot of justification for identifying sites. If we were to do that, we would have to provide additional, we would have to demonstrate additional justification that all of those sites that are already developed would actually have the feasibility to be redeveloped and add those additional units that the upzoning would allow. And I don't, I'm sorry, I don't have the numbers in front of me for that from that analysis, but there were not enough vacant parcels in the RM zone to make that sort of a viable option to cover our housing units. But that is definitely something that if you if you'd like, we can explore further.
Okay. Thank you.
Jennifer, interesting answer to Commissioner Wu's question. And so it raised a question to me, not really a technical question, I think, but a maybe philosophical one. I get the impression I I know cities have sort of in the past have like tried to game the system. They've they've identified areas for low income housing that maybe weren't really practical for that purpose. Is it reasonable to assume that the state has started to or has been sort of tightening down on the way that cities are defining their affordable housing areas? So that it's more difficult to avoid zoning or building them? Is that a reasonable assumption versus, say, five or 10 years ago?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, sounds like it. So that's interesting. All right, I don't see any other questions right now, so we can move on to the public comment portion. I will open the public hearing. And Gabriel, I know we have a number of emails to read. So I'll let you and Jennifer read those and I'll be the timer.
Okay, thank you, Terrence. Yeah, Jennifer and I will be splitting this up. So I'll start first. The first comment we received is from Denise Flurry. And the comment reads, Dear Plan Commission and Staff, I am proud of our city and the wonderful quality of life. It enables us to have, at the same time, I'm concerned about the increasing problems created by the lack of affordable housing for our community, both residents and for those who work here. I believe the Plan Commission, Plan Staff and City Council have a very important and broad responsibility to all the residents of San Clemente. They they need to help guide us to a future for San Clemente that creates a vital, livable, growing and sustainable environment for all its residents, while building on our values and vision of a place for each of us to call home. Overall, I am supporting much of the staff plan for enabling our potential growth for the next eight plus years using the second version of higher density planning. I think at this stage, our planning should be open to allow us flexibility in accommodating the needs as we are planning ahead for eight years. Toledo has a density of forty units per acre already, and that has fit into our town just fine. For larger site areas, more density should be considered. Today's nonprofit developers have designed housing that can use that density that's surrounding open shared space that is, this is beautiful and very livable. The Pico Plaza site creates a great opportunity for neighborhood revitalization projects. The site can be multiused with small retail and residential. This model has thrived for years in helping neighborhoods and small cities across California. Location can provide affordable housing opportunities for workforce, for citywide driving, small businesses of retail restaurants and visitors. These businesses are vital to San Clemente's success. I also think the city must acknowledge the usage of the two point two nine acre surplus land at Avenue of La Plata and Hermosa. Under the new surplus land act, this site may be may be required to first consider proposals for very low income housing, since this is in Toledo, density of forty units per acre is already in place. Median household income in San Clemente is now a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Median means that half of San Clemente households have income of less than that amount. Affordable housing has broad applicability across a range of income levels. Family of four with income of seventy-four thousand three hundred dollars qualifies for low income affordable housing. For a two-person family, the maximum income is fifty-five thousand fifty dollars. A family of four qualifies for very low income housing with an income of forty-six thousand four hundred fifty dollars. For two, the very low income level is thirty-four thousand four hundred dollars. We have generations right behind us that are needed here to help our community grow and thrive. Being against affordable housing can limit opportunity to be to the very people who can help grow and sustain our city. Maybe it's your kids or grandkids or your neighbors or the next business entrepreneur or the great teacher that will work with your kids. And they're right, a link to affordable housing photos. Thank you for your attention and for your service and commitment to our city, Denise Flurry, San Clemente resident. Next comment, and this is from Kathy Espahani. It reads as follows, Good evening, my name is Kathy Espahani and I'm a member of the San Clemente Affordable Housing Coalition. I would like to begin my by applauding the work of our year lead planner, Jennifer Savage. I appreciate her efforts to find realistic solutions for the steep arena challenge ahead. San Clemente must plan for four hundred and forty new units of affordable housing for lower income households. I have a few suggestions to help me help the city meet the this legal obligation. The first thing the city should do is increase the maximum density of all affordable housing sites to at least forty units to acre and in some places up to sixty units per acre. Higher density is essential to making affordable housing developments economically feasible for developers. If San Clemente truly wants to meet its affordable housing arena numbers and actually get affordable housing built in our city, we must allow higher density of at least forty units to acre and in some places up to sixty units to acre. Higher density should apply only if at least twenty percent of the units are affordable for low and very low income households. The second thing I recommend is that the city add two key properties to its portable housing site inventory. The first property is a two point two nine acre city on site Avenue of La Plata and West Avenue of Vista Hermosa, personal number six seventy one six three zero one. This site is currently on the city's surplus land list. I understand the city has been pursuing the idea of putting a gas station at this corner. Instead of a gas station, the city should encourage nonprofit developers to build affordable rental housing for lower income families there. Affordable housing for families is a much higher use and would need a much greater need than a gas station. Moreover, the property is perfect for higher density housing of up to sixty units to acre, because it is next to a big sports park and across the street from a commercial shop center. Second property the city should consider should add to the site plan for affordable housing is the ten acre site on Pico on Pico owned by the Emergency Shelter Coalition, a local nonprofit. Landowner wants to donate the land for the use of affordable housing for lower income working families and for permanent supportive housing for people who are homeless and in need of wraparound services. That land donation would make the site the the most feasible location in the city for affordable housing to actually get built in the next planning period. To that end, I urge the city to drop its imminent domain losses against this property, rezoning it for high density residential use, then exercise this discretion under measure V to approve housing there based on the finding that using the property for affordable housing is a superior development alternative that benefits all with health. Thank you. The next comment is from Roma or Rana Henry. Dear Plan Commissioners, the lack of affordable housing is causing great burden on our essential workforce whose incomes have not kept up with the pace of housing costs. It is also causing generational tensions as young adults and families are unable to afford housing in the way that boomer generation was able to. The lack of planning for a balanced mix of housing that meets the needs of all residents should be rectified. As you consider the housing element update site strategy, I urge you to approve the highest possible densities. Example sixteen units to acre in the high highest opportunity areas close to shopping, transit, schools, jobs, and zone them for affordable housing for those at very low and low income levels. This will make building this affordable housing much more economically feasible to developers and thus increase likelihood they will actually build housing that is attainable for lower income people. I understand the owner of the ten acre, two acre site on Pico, the Emergency Shelter Coalition is willing to donate the land if it will be developed for affordable housing. This presents a great opportunity for the city. This should be zoned a hundred percent for extremely low and very low income housing, affordable housing at a density of sixty units per acre. And this city should practically work with a nonprofit developer to build a hundred percent affordable housing. Another two point two acre parcel that should be done a hundred percent affordable housing at sixty units per acre is the property at Vista Hermosa of La Plata, just city owned land. This land should be donated to nonprofit developer with a stipulation that they build a hundred percent affordable housing there for extremely low and very low income people. Now is the time to act. Let let's miss, let's miss more opportunities to provide. to provide a fuller range of affordable options for housing in San Clemente. Thank you for your time and service. Ronan Henry. And the next comment is from Chuck Bassett and it reads, it has only recently gone to my attention, the city of San Clemente Plan Commission and/or City Council are considering additional locations for low income and HUD housing in San Clemente, particularly the Telega Marblehead areas. I must assume this has been an ongoing process to include having a consultant participate and provide guidance. If the city is moving forward with these decisions, it comes as a surprise to many and many of my friends and neighbors, even though most of us pay close attention to local current events, ask that the city San Clemente conduct their official business in a transparent fashion to the needs and the concerns of the citizenry, take into account the long-term impact you make to this wonderful community. Please keep all this up to date and informed because this is our community too. Chuck Bassett, San Clemente. Next comment is from Bryn Burke and it reads as follows, Hello, I am a newer resident to via Pacific uh, community here in San Clemente. I have lived in San Clemente for six years and after saving up with my husband, we were able to purchase our dream home late last year. As we grew our family this year, the quiet neighborhood and highly regarded school district was a must when purchasing our home. Plan to enjoy our home for many, many years. It was recently brought to my attention that there are plans to change overlays in the commercial district just south of my neighborhood. My understanding is that the city will, could allow a developer to come in and build up to a hundred, eight hundred and eighty low income apartments and the land currently being utilized by a commercial business. Not only would this drastically increase traffic and lessen neighborhood values, it would completely degrade the school district. As stated above, the appeal to this area, the town and specific neighborhood was the quiet, safe and small community. This email expresses my extreme concern for repurposing developed commercial land to house nearly ninety percent of the cities require low income housing. While understanding and agreeing with the need for housing for all, I ask that you please strongly consider a different location for the required low income housing in San Clemente. With an increase in working from home and hardship COVID nineteen, existing homes have now become a safe place for work and play. After speaking with a real estate professional regarding this matter, she explained the increase in the interest for commercial office buildings to turn into housing. I recommend this be the solution for the current housing element here in San Clemente. Lastly, are you allowing residents to join the meeting to voice their concerns in person? If so, please let me know that I attend alongside my concerned neighbors and friends. If there is a better place to send this letter of concern, please redirect me, uh, please redirect me as soon as possible. All my best friend. Next comment is, uh, from Chris Yates, I believe. It says, To whom it may concern, I am writing to express my disdain for projected zoning for low income housing units in close proximity of Lowe's and Albertson's parking lot. Is my understanding that approximately eighty-nine percent of the zoning can be placed in that location? This location is less than a mile from my home. I am saddened by the constant battle we have with living in Pacific Crest. We are a smaller community and have been targeted through years, toll roads, sports parks, solar panels, gas stations, and now another blow. I have been a resident of San Clemente for more than twenty-five years. I love the city. I raised my family here. If you not believe it would be a fair place for the majority of low income housing in a condensed area, not only would it affect the entire city and shopping center, the site was never designed for such a large housing site, causing congestion, driving down home values. Additionally, the majority of the burden would be placed on one community. The location at the end of Pico already has low income housing, the residents living there purchased their properties with this knowledge. Spreading out the zones would dilute the burden on existing citizens. I thank you in advance for your prompt attention to this matter. And hopefully you're, you consider all locations. Best, Anne Marie Kates. Uh, next comment is from Julian Chaney and it reads, Dear City Council members and Plan Commission, I Julian Chaney owning and residing at ninety-four via Onda, Onda, San Clemente, part of Pacific uh, Mandalay HOA, but hereby I formally object to the construction of low income housing development of parcel on or around the Lowe's Albertson Shopping Center on Avenue de Pico, San Clemente, as well as Veracruz and Vista Hermosa. Sincerely, Julian Chaney. The next comment letters, uh, reads as follows, Dear Plan Commissioners and Councilmembers, I am writing regarding the proposed location for possible rezoning to accommodate the requirement mandated by the state for low income housing units within the region. I only became aware of an online survey that they asked for the survey closed, so we have provided my question, but input below. The state determines the number of housing units required for each region and the Southern California Association of Governments determines how to allocate the regional housing number to individual jurisdictions. A, has there been a final determination from the Southern California Association of Governments that the city of San Clemente burden is nine hundred and eighteen units in this six cycle? If not, are there other regional options which is developing a regional solution in partnership with surrounding cities like Dana Point and San Juan Paco Strono? That should be looked at and considered. Uh, two, regarding feedback of the proposed sites highlighted and read on the maps attached to the staff report. A, first choice for rezoning sites RST and maybe U. This is an area in need of redevelopment anyway. It has minimal impact on two existing residential and commercial properties and has quick and easy access for law enforcement, which when such needs arise, if additional spaces required beyond sites RST and U above, please evaluate any city-owned property that is essentially appropriate. Not already included in these maps and provide them to the public for comment before making a final decision. C, second choices for rezoning, possibly W depending on what the long-term plan is for development beyond this area. B and C, these three areas appear to have less impact to existing residential and commercial properties. Sites D through Q should not be considered and should be removed from the list of options. Rezoning these sites will have adverse impact on local residences and businesses and is not in keeping with the culture, environment, architectural elements historically established in the community. Thank you for your review consideration. Sincerely, David. Dean. All right. Next letter is, uh, reads Plan Commission, City of San Clemente, City Councils, City of San Clemente. I live in Pacific Crest community in San Clemente. I'm writing to express how our neighborhood will be negatively affected impacted by low income housing development currently being considered for use on land near our homes. Economic, uh, so lessons occurs when property loses value due to external factors such as increased local traffic congestion, pollution and the size of buildings. As a taxpayer and homeowner, I am expressing my opposition to the city. Thank you, Shannon Dunbar. All right. Next, uh, comment letter reads, Dear Plan Commissioners and City Councilmembers, I'm writing regarding the proposed location for the, uh, potential future nine hundred U two low income housing units within San Clemente. Deny them nine dash A. I understand there was reportedly a survey sent out regarding these site options, but unfortunately I ignore any of my neighbors where, where such survey and therefore cannot participate. Nevertheless, you need to recognize that my neighbor will be shocked to learn that uh, eight hundred and eighty units of low income housing may occupy their adjacent property, the proposed D through Q site at the Lowe's Walmart Albertson's site. This would of course have a very, have a profound impact on our quality of life in many ways, just congestion, loss of many of the main, uh, neighborhood restaurants and shops out the site and certainly tanker property values. Furthermore, the homeowners, the man, the man, Mandalay, uh, Pacific Crest and Via Pacifico will want to know why eighty-nine percent of the city's proposed units will be imposed upon us. Currently, I respectfully suggest that the D through Q sites be removed from the Plan Commission Staff Report. Thank you for your consideration, Gerald Farrenbach. Next letters, uh, reads as follows, It is amazing how councils can hide or try not to make things very public. When I found out about this, I was really shocked and disappointed in the San Clemente Plan Commission and became more shocked as, as I saw the proposed sites for low income housing. I started thinking, did anyone on the commission take anything seriously? Obviously, the first thing that came to mind was the commission did not take any input from the citizens of San Clemente. Second, I would be willing to bet there were, that no one of the Plan Commission lives near one of those sites. Third, how much money, third, how much money did the city pay for the survey? Because I think we need a refund. Fourth, I understand that this current planning commission term expires in June. It should not be in a position to handle this. Fifth, why is it that a politician is always willing to put low income homelessness halfway houses in everyone's else's backyard and never their own? In addition, why should these low income housing tenants get prime real estate? At the same time, we wrote the equity value of hardworking families who have made sacrifices to live there. Low income housing always will bring crime and drugs that makes surrounding neighborhoods unsafe. One of the most ridiculous proposal sites are the eight hundred and eighty units on Pico. Really build a concrete, uh, pardon structure and then add eight hundred and eighty units. Really, that would mean folks in the neighborhood right behind this complex would be staring straight into concrete. And when looking up, we moved here to enjoy a small beach town feel and not be in a concrete jungle, leaving leave that tail in others. We moved here for a more safe community. Same reason we fight against toll road going through San Clemente probably has to do, again, the people of San Clemente should decide what they want and where if low income housing has to come in, then open a public forum for it. My vote is for none of it. None, but if it has to, then, uh, as close to the county dump as possible would be my vote. We all were to live here and enjoy the great beach town San Clemente, not to have other damage our communities and turn this town into a concrete jungle and bring a lot of crime and drugs into this area. I for one would like to see a meeting open to the public and make it well known as to win. I would like the next Plan Commission to handle this as not much effort was put into this proposal. Easy not to put much effort when it doesn't affect Robert and Kelly Hammond. Okay, and so last letter I'll read, Dearest Team City Council Members and Plan Commission Members, first of all, thank you for all of your service to our beloved San Clemente. We appreciate all that you do to keep our city safe. Happy and thriving, my husband and I live in Pacific, uh, San Clemente subdivision at ninety-five via Onda. Our HOA has recently made us aware of the potential land lease chain in and around a neighborhood at home that could open the door for low income housing very close to our home. But we know that it is, it is necessary to provide all types of affordable housing to our residents. We do not think that overlay zoning on or near the Lowe's Albertson Shopping Center is either a deal or the right place for such housing. Such areas are already way too crowded and congested. There are many other areas, especially further down Avenue de Pico, where more land is available with less crowded congestion. In addition, we work very hard as small business owners to pay for, take care of, maintain our homes and its value. We want to continue to keep it that way and feel that such development not being the best interest for our community. We strongly urge you not to consider any parcels by Pacifica San Clemente for land use zoning changes for low income development. Thank you, Carrie Navid Kanani, residents, Pacifica, San Clemente neighborhood. And that's the end of my comments. I'll pass it on to Jennifer.
Next comment, Dear City of San Clemente, I am writing this email to express our objections and concerns for the proposed locations for low income housing. As we understand, the City Council and the Planning Department is voting to approve overlay zoning in the Lowe's Albertson's parking lot as well as many locations within two miles of our home. We are against approving this zoning for the following reasons. One, such a large complex, low income or not, would dramatically transform the current neighborhood dynamic. Two, there would be an increase in traffic in an already increasingly busy area. Three, a large influx of people would be a burden on our public school system. Four, an increase of people would generate additional unwanted noise. Five, it could potentially decrease the value of our homes. Six, a very high proportion of these units are proposed within two miles of our home. Concentrating such a large number of units in this area would have a disproportionate, disproportionate impact in this part of the city. Seven, the outlet project was already enough of an addition to the city. We are in need of no additional projects. It is better to consider a project like this for an empty or more industrialized city. San Clemente has no longer any need for further projects such as this. Regards, Misty and Mike. Apologize if I'm not pronouncing this correctly, Larva Johnny. Next comment. Dear Planning Commissioners, Mayor, Mayor Pretem and City Council Members, my wife and I have lived in San Clemente for the past nineteen years and love the city. It has a great low-key lifestyle that is perfect. The people are friendly. You can find whatever you need from great restaurants, food stores or hardware stores. We are concerned about the plans for low income housing in the city. The proposed rezoning for low-cost housing has not had adequate community development involvement, sorry. I and my neighbors did not know of the proposed rezoning and survey until two weeks ago. The city needs to start over with a good outreach plan to get input from the residents of San Clemente. This would include public notices, letters and emails to residents and using the San Clemente Times and Nextdoor to get the word out and public meetings to obtain input. We should not allow city staff who does not live in our community and an outsourced consultant who does not live in our community to come up with proposed locations for the low income housing. It should be the residents. The current Planning Commission should not vote on where a low income housing will be since their term expires in June. This needs to be postponed until the next commission is appointed. In, if some of the proposed locations are far-fetched and not possible, then they should not be on the map and a new map needs to be designed with more community input. My neighbors and I are looking forward to working with you to develop a plan that meets state law and works for the residents of our great city, Tom Levy. Next comment, Dear City Council Members and Planning Commission, I, Paul McGregor, owning and residing at ninety-four via Onda, San Clemente, part of the Pacifica Mandalay HOA, would hereby like to formally object to the construction of low income housing development on parcels on or around the Lowe's Albertson Shopping Center on Avenue de Pico, San Clemente, as well as Veracruz and Vista Hermosa. Sincerely, Paul McGregor. Next comment, To who it may concern, I am writing to express my disdain for a projected zoning for low income housing units in close proximity of Lowe's and Albertson's parking lot. It is my understanding that approximately eighty-nine percent of zoning could be placed in that location. This location is less than a mile from my home. I am saddened by the constant battle we have living in Pacific Crest. We are a smaller community and have been targeted through the years. Toll roads, sports park, solar panels, gas stations, and now another blow. I have been a resident in San Clemente for more than eighteen years. I love the city and have raised my family here. I do not believe it would be fair to place the majority of low income housing in condensed area. Not only would it affect the entire city and shopping center, this site was never designed for such a large housing site, causing congestion and driving down home values. Additionally, the majority of the burden would be placed in, on one community. The location at the end of Pico already has low income housing. The residents living there purchased their property with that knowledge. Spreading out the zones would dilute the burden on existing citizens. I thank you in advance for your prompt attention to this matter. I am hopeful you consider all locations. Best, Heidi Uflin. Next comment. I realize that no actual building is happening. It's just a study of zoning for affordable housing. Nonetheless, it's the first step toward making development possible if it ever does happen. Please allow me to rephrase my previous comments. I have some comments that I would like to share about the sites chosen for study for zoning an additional nine hundred and eighty-two affordable housing units. My biggest concern of all the locations being studies is with the Lowe's Albertson Shopping Center. It's unclear to me if zoning is approved and development starts if the eight hundred and eighty units would coexist or if the entire shopping center would be demolished or some hybrid. I guess there is no way to know without plans to develop. I feel the shopping center is a huge lifeline for San Clemente. It is the location of several essential businesses that do not exist elsewhere in the city, the nearest being ten miles away in Maguena Nigal. Rezoning the shopping center could lead to losing the shopping center and that would be devastating to many residents. The irony would be placing Walmart with a very large eight hundred and eighty unit affordable housing complex that would benefit from the shopping center. I think rezoning such heavily used locations for for shopping with more housing is the wrong approach. I think zoning such a large population of affordable housing in a single location is also a poor, poor choice. First, it gives those seeking affordable housing less choice if built. It concentrates a single demographic in one location. It would add new traffic to a single location if built. I would like to suggest spreading the affordable zoning throughout the city. Avoid replacing or rezoning shopping centers, restaurants, et cetera, for housing. San Clemente already has limited resources when it comes to shopping. San Clemente's appeal is its small town feel. Let's not make it easier for San Clemente to turn it into another Irvine with giant multi-level apartment complexes spanning multiple city blocks. Andy. To the Planning Commission, we are against high-density housing. Crime is already increasing. Traffic is getting worse. San Clemente used to be a slow-growth community. How sad the government feels like they can stick a bunch of people anywhere they choose. Sincerely, Rudy. Next comment, The proposed rezoning for low income housing that has not had, has not had adequate community involvement. My neighbors and I did not know of the proposed rezoning and survey until two weeks ago. The city needs to start over with a good outreach plan to get input from the residents of San Clemente. This would include public notices in the SC Times, letters and emails to residents notifying residents of public meetings and obtain input. I am asking that you spread the low income housing throughout San Clemente, not just in one area. For example, I saw on the map that the majority surround Marblehead, Pacific Crest, Reserve and Lowe's. We should not allow city staff who do not live in our community and an outsourced consultant who does not live in our community to come up with the proposed locations for low income housing. It should be the residents. If some of the proposed locations are far fetched and not possible, they should not be on the map and a new map needs to be designed with more community input. My neighbors and I are looking forward to working with you to develop a plan that meets state law and works for the residents of our great city. Thank you, Tony Burns. Dear planning commission, we live at seventy-two via Sonarissa in San Clemente. And have been alerted that there are proposed changes to the housing element that could dramatically and negatively affect our home and community. We moved into the Pacifica HOA eleven years ago, which is located behind Albertson's. Since this time, our small community has had to deal with the sports park being developed. The lights from the sports park standing out like sore thumbs and lit even worse. We had to fight a proposal for solar panels on the hill behind us, then the toll road option to fly over the hills behind and next to us. We moved to this neighborhood for the quiet green hills behind our place and the small neighborhood feeling. I'm writing to ask that you can reconsider changing the zoning around our neighborhood to allow for so much low income housing to be built. In such a small area of the entire town. It does not seem fair that eighty-nine percent of low income housing proposed. Would be within two miles of our house and that a majority would be right below our community at the Lowe's Albertson's parking area. This is an undue burden on our community that has been plagued by threats of TCA and town projects for years. We love San Clemente but feel like our value as a community is being abused at every turn. Please reconsider your attempts to change zoning in our area and do not make us bear way more than the burden of the change in zoning. All but two hundred and six of the nine hundred and eighty-two units would be located very close and directly and negatively affecting our homes and our lives. We ask you to reconsider this change in zoning. Sincerely, Catherine Fortress. Next comment, planning commission, city of San Clemente, city council, city of San Clemente. I am a homeowner in Pacifica San Clemente subdivision. Our neighborhood will be negatively impacted by the low income housing development currently being considered for use on open parcels near it. Thus, as a taxpayer and homeowner, I am compelled to, and I hereby do so by voicing my strong opposition to the city. Agreeing to implement any further steps that would or could result in the zoning of any of these parcels that can in any way whatsoever. Permit construction of low income housing on any of them. James B. Walker. May have two more, to whom it may concern. As residents of Mandalay community, Pacifica San Clemente, we would like to voice our strong concerns about the proposed overlay zoning. And proposed low income apartment development on parcels of land directly adjacent to our neighborhood. Of most concern at the present time is the overlay zoning in the Lowe's Albertson Shopping Center. We urge you to please look elsewhere for the placement of the low income housing development. While we understand the requirement of the housing element for the city, this is a gross disturbance of the quality of housing and life to our neighborhood and neighbors. We are prepared to provide signatures of protest and voice our strong and valid concerns to the proposal if necessary. Thank you very much for your time and consideration. Regards concerned San Clemente homeowners. Last comment, dear planning commission, my husband and I live in the Pacifica neighborhood with our two children. It has come to our attention that the city of San Clemente is in the process of updating the housing element near our home. We are not opposed to low income housing, however, the sheer number of affordable housing units is not becoming of this area. Please take into consideration the families that work hard to live here. We have chosen to live here because it is safe, the school system, people maintain their homes with pride. It's family friendly and homeowners share the same values. This low income housing project will have a big and we believe negative impact on the community of Pacifica. I would urge the planning committee members to please go and visit the Pacifica neighborhood, especially on a weekend when children and families are out enjoying our hometown lifestyle. I hope you'll see this is not a community that should be damaged by this type of project. Sincerely, Erin and Fabio Candolo. And that's the end of comments for this evening.
Alright, thank you very much. I did hear two question, I'm sorry Gabriel, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, you know, chairman and commissioners, I was able to talk to Commissioner Crandall. I know he was able to join us, but he did have a comment that I wanted to share and he did mention that. You know, he was asking when we might resume in person meetings for the planning commission. I hope that would be a venue for community members to be able to make their comments in person, but we don't know when that's gonna happen. So he just, you know, expressed interest in having those venues that may allow. Residents to express their comments in a more open forum, maybe a little bit different than the Zoom platform. So those were his comments, you know, and you know, we definitely hear that. If there are any updates where that is available to us, like here at the, our planning commission meetings. We will let you know, but at this time, we don't know when we're gonna be able to resume to that person.
Okay, thanks for making that clear. I did hear from the public two questions that I'm gonna ask staff about, see if we can address these questions for them. One is, has there been a final determination from the Southern California Association of Governments? That the city of San Clemente's burden is nine hundred and eighty-two units in the sixth cycle?
Hi, yes, so on March fourth, Skag formally adopted those numbers.
Alright, so that is our burden, our city, nine hundred and eighty-two.
At this time, yeah.
Okay, and the other question was, actually it says if not, but. Are there other regional options such as developing a regional solution in partnership with surrounding cities like Dana Point and San Juan Capistrano that should be looked at and considered?
Yes, and there's a few opportunities to do so. First, as a direct answer to the question. There are cities in South Orange County that are trying to figure out how and if state law allows that. Specifically, would state law allow San Clemente to satisfy some of their housing numbers? If they were to support in some means, housing in another city. So that is the more direct answer to the question and then the less direct answer is that there are opportunities from a regional perspective. Through two means with very similar names. One is called the Orange County Housing Trust. And the other one is called the Orange County Housing Finance Trust, I believe. And those are two opportunities that some cities in Orange County have become partners with or are part of. Where there's a regional effort to support development of affordable housing. And so there are some options. Those are not the limits to those options. Because this housing crisis is a state issue and it's very hard for cities like San Clemente that are very built out. To satisfy those RENA numbers and so there are continuing conversations. But for the time being, those are the three options that are available.
Okay, thank you very much and I will close the public hearing and open this up to planning commission discussion. Anyone want to kick us off? Commissioner Brown.
It's kind of like in the military when you're the second lieutenant and the orders come down and you're the last one. And so I know the public is very frustrated about this and I don't think they quite understand. This entire cycle or this housing element and the broad brushes that it has. It's separate unity of our general plan, it's the only one that's approved by the state on an eight year cycle. Having been through two of these issues along with the SB two reviews of them. Four or five efforts were extensive. Yeah, I think, I know you staff tried to do a public outreach, maybe Gabriel, it's time to have you and. Senior city staff and one of the city council members sit down with like. Members of San Clemente Times, instead of having some public notice order, have John Ramondo. Write an article for the people to read to laser that in more common English so they're not panicked that there's gonna be eight hundred units in the Lowe's parking lot. This is a bigger, you know, bigger, more encompassing and lengthy process and they think and maybe that's one way to get public outreach. And a common thing I would suggest that you explore that with the people on the third floor in City Hall. My other comment I made earlier, there is that metal area up there in the business park. That sat there fallow level and if you go up, drive up and look at it tomorrow, it's been up to thirty or forty years. But the other issue I would say on the, get away from the spotlight type of look of an overlay and more of a general look. Take the affordable housing overlay, which was very focused up and down El Comino, we already did twenty eleven or twelve. Take that, that model, but broaden it out, lengthen it out and spread it out over the city. In other words. Consider it an overlay that goes all the way up and down El Comino, all Pico, maybe a mile wide. There's areas where you can't build, but I would, I would. Broaden it out, fuse it out for a potential for rezoning and see how that fits. I throw that out there to the rest of the commission for discussion.
And let me maybe hit the pause button on general discussion for just a moment. We do have these specific sites. Listed on various pages. I thought, one thought that occurs to me is it might, if it's helpful for staff. We could actually do a little bit of a page turn and just see if there's any discussion on site one, on site A, B, C, D, et cetera. Is there interest in the commission and going through it like that?
Yeah, that is supported and once we go over the list, we can add it to the list. So what we're thinking about any additional candidates.
Okay, so let's do that and so we can kind of just touch on each site and we'll look. I know Dawn brought up an interesting possibility. We can discuss that as well and then we'll continue with more, more open general discussion on this. So I'm looking at page seven of seventeen, that's kind of the first zoomed in spot and that's parcel B. On Avenue to La Pata. Does anyone have any comments or observations about that?
Yeah, I do, not directly on this parcel, but in the same business park. As the commissioner Brown mentioned, there are two very large parcels at the very top. And then across the street there are small parcels.
Well, just, I'm sorry commissioner, just to kind of keep us organized, if you want to. Introduce new parcels, that's great, but why don't we get through what's in here first, the ones that are identified and then we'll talk about new ones. Is that alright?
Sure.
Okay, so this parcel B, any comments or observations?
Well, parcel B looks to me like it's the heritage church site. Is that what it is? Their property that they own next to the church? And. It's two acres there and. I guess I'm, I'm fine with it as far as putting it in an overlay. You know, people can get to work in the business park somehow. It's empty, it's empty right now. The church originally had, we'd already approved a parking lot for extension, but I guess they never, they never executed it, but. It's probably more of most of the properties that we have.
Yeah, I'm fine with leaving it in the potential inventory, so. Other comments on that one? Okay, I'm on page eight now, looking at lot C, looks like that's the corner of Vista Hermosa and La Pata. Comments or observations?
Well, it's target and we just proved the subdivision in there that they're better ready to pull permits on. I don't know why they pulled permits yet, Gabriel. I mean, it's all through approval cycle other than they've gotta get, you know, all the other condition approval ready to start construction, but.
Commissioner Blackwell, did you, were you interjecting?
I'm sorry, I think I had a little bit of a delay. I may have spoken over Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Brown, you all done? On that one? Okay, I feel the same way. I just, I'm struggling with these, with all of these. But this particular one, yeah, we've already got. We've already got a target there and we've got, you know, the project that was recently reviewed and approved. I just don't see how we're gonna get any housing. The same thing would apply to a lot of these parcels, but I'll, we'll do the page turn Jim, that's fine.
Okay, yeah, I, I actually think looking at acres of parking, it's not, I mean, it's a necessary, but not, not necessarily efficient land use. And if something's overparked, it's really, you know, not a good land use at all for the overparked stuff. It's also, large acres of parking are also a magnet for crime. So, but having said that, we do, they haven't pulled the permits yet, but we did approve. Some, some additional commercial in that parking lot. And the Talega, excuse me, the target business, as far as I know, they're doing fine. There's no plans on moving or anything. So for those reasons, personally, I'm a little uncomfortable with marking this whole site as a potential. As part of the potential inventory, just because I don't, I don't kind of see how it's gonna happen. I don't. You know, you've got a going concern there. You're probably gonna have more building in there. So where or how it would happen, I don't, I don't kind of see the path to see it realized.
I agree. It's the same, same comment here. I guess it doesn't hurt to have it, but I just don't see. How practical that can be. Jennifer, educated. As long as, once we have the overlay, they have additional option to have a development opportunity. But it doesn't hurt them any other way, does it?
Correct.
Okay, well, still, we can have it, but it really doesn't make much sense to me. Because I don't, I don't see it to be redeveloped anytime soon in the future.
Okay, next one, this is page nine and this is the Lowe's Walmart site with a number of different parcels in it. Any observation? Commissioner Blackwell?
I do. Okay, so I am, I'm gonna reach out to another, another city. But over at Crown Valley five, we've all witnessed a pretty large development happen there, high density. Development that was sort of shoehorned in there. It's almost miraculous how many units they fit in there. I mean, kind of amazing. So that kind of reminded me, you know, how we can use space, this particular location. And I have read every single letter that's come through from those residents. And I get it and I, I can appreciate their concern. Again, this is early in the conversation, but spatially, spatially. I can see that as potential place for a, maybe a smaller scale, well designed. Situation, being mindful that low income doesn't necessarily mean high crime. Okay, I think that's an important point to make here. But with that said, I, you know, I'm recognizing some underutilized space there. Lots of underutilized parking we've seen with the chase bank going in. We saw very little, if any, impact at all. If anything, no change to circulations in that area with that added intensity there. So I struggle with this one. I think it, I think the numbers are a bit high. I would, I would be very concerned about impacts to more sensitive uses. Such as residential uses above, if there was to be a large, as you know, the description laid out potential, you know. Parking structure, et cetera. There'd have to be an awful lot of effort put into the design, integrating into the community there. In a way that is scaled properly and doesn't create a magnificent impact on traffic circulation during, especially during peak hours there. As a primary corridor to the high school and you're feeding from Talega above, which is over three thousand dwelling units. All of those children becoming, coming of age now, you're gonna have a big push, high school. Lots of young drivers come through there. I mean, it goes on and on, the concerns I have. I would not rule this out from a spatial perspective, but I am concerned with the densities that are proposed there. I just don't, I just don't see how that could happen unless there's some shifting of usage in that area. But, you know, from a zoning perspective, location, the primary corridor there. You know, I can see, I can see that as a possibility, but I think it's gonna warrant a lot of massaging. Yeah.
Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, kind of share some of the, Mr. Blackwell's concerns. I think we ought to leave it on. Share some of the Black, Commissioner Blackwell's concerns, I think we ought to leave it on the list. I think the public's got to be assured that, you know, when you look at certain dwelling acres and all that stuff. You could put some uh. Some of these units around the peripheries up near Pico. We uh, we conditioned the bank down there and there's a, when the original shopping center went in. Specifically behind him were concerned uh. About the noise of that shopping center and so the council conditioned the hours of operation of delivery trucks. And restricted the hours of the day for delivery and behind, but why the new bank went in so for. So far away from uh. From the housing area that the community behind it. And so. You could also, you know, overall, when we get down to a project level, if, if we were to keep it in there. In the overlay, you would condition those units to be more up against Pico. Uh, and so I say leave it in there, but the public's got to be assured there's not going to be two or three hundred units going in there. That wouldn't be supported either. That's kind of my view on it.
Commissioner Wu?
Well, among all the um. Possible parcels, uh, these shopping strip mall is probably the most ready. To get some uh, mixed use or standalone residential to fitting between the large openings, especially um, um. I mean, especially fronting uh, Pico. I'm specifically talking about in front of uh, Walmart and in front of Albertson. Where the, the, there's a huge gap between the smaller commercial buildings. And in the parking, um, you know. We're not necessarily proposing a structural parking or underground parking. Um, it, it can be solved in many ways, so maybe um, a, a real time parking demand survey. Um, can figure that out, make it maybe a shared parking analysis. But I, I see the opportunities there to fitting some residential building there for the. For the office depot, I know it's a safe for business and I think the staple is close. This is the only office supply store. Um, this location is, this, this location is very good. If, if one day. A mixed use property will come in, who knows? This lot is uh, twenty feet below the street. So before you have more than two story, people from La Pata cannot even see it. So, and behind it, it's a large, large slope. So those are the locations I'm looking at, of course Lowe's has a um. I, I believe they have overparking issue here, not by code, but in reality, there are lots of open space and the people never park there. So there are potential there and they're flat, they're, they're. Um, they're the most ready to be, to be used also if we want to add some housing, whether it's a standalone or mixed use there. Um, so I, I think we, we should, we should keep them there. Of course, I understand um, residents concerned, especially if we want to add a beauty. Uh, in the Lowe's parking, parking lot, which is very close to some of the single family building. We need to make sure that the height and the rebuilding massing and a, a lot of other things to. Um, to be done right. Um, but overall, I believe that this property has a lot of potential. Um, to, to provide a lot of the parking need here, not to say that they are the only one. We, we're talking about other, other parcels one, um, pretty soon. Um, regarding the distance, short distance to it. Uh, look at uh, so El Camino Real corridor, the whole corridor is affordable housing overlay zone and, and myself. Um, it's not too far, my, my home is not too far from that corridor. I never heard any people complaining about um, being included in affordable housing overlay zone or. I, I just don't see that as a huge, huge issue. Um, this lot if rezoned, uh, staff said is not going to be of low income housing. It's going to be a little higher density, um, but a staff suggested not for um, very low income housing here. So even if it is, I don't see, I don't see much of the problem. The city has to provide those housing, so I, I'm, I'm for, for them to stay on the list.
I um, I, I think I'm in basic agreement with um. With, with all of you, I do think. I, I partly have the same problem I do with the Target Center in that I, I don't, I don't see Walmart, Lowe's, those acres, anchors. Stores and thus the other ones. I don't see them going anywhere soon, so if we were to zone. Those sites, my question would be the same as Target is like, how is that going to happen? But there's this strip next to um, uh, next to Pico. You know, like the lots F, G, I, L, M, P. Um, you know, maybe, what is that one? I can't quite read it, maybe, oh, but. You know, it, for some, some of the reasons that Commissioner Wu was talking about, it's a low grade, things like that. Um, it starts to make it a little more appealing. I, I do suspect that they're overparked there. Um, uh, and so it might be something worth, as we take a deeper cut at this, it might be something for staff to look at. Um, you know, how is that parking? I, the, the traffic service level in that area, I believe is an A right now. Um, it's certainly no, no worse than B. And it's designed for uh, plenty of traffic, so I don't see that as an issue. Uh, it is near the high school, but that is actually kind of a good thing because if there's kids there going to the high school, there's actually a class. One bike path that runs right through, right by there. And there's um, you know, three egresses from town there, one of them down Pico towards the freeway past the high school. But then there's two others that go in other directions. So uh, I think, you know, at, at a minimum, the, you know, considering at least a strip where you could probably, I, I kind of counted up. Some of the density there, I think, oh, I got to remember now, I think it was something like. You know, sixty, seventy, eighty units total, if you kind of did, you know, I, the highest density. That could address some of where we were going with this. Uh, I will say we got a lot of comments uh, in this area that were concerned about crime. And there was kind of a, a built in assumption, unfortunately, in many of those comments, that. Uh, low income housing equals crime. And that, that, that simply isn't the case. I think it might be a little unfair to, 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 you know, uh, uh, attach that to people who might move in there just automatically. Um, I will say also that whatever we build, whatever low income housing that we build anywhere in the city, including this. Still has to meet our design and architectural standards. And along this area right here, we've got, um, this is a scenic corridor. Pico is a scenic corridor, in other words, the, that street and what you can see from the street has to be of high quality. Uh, design, it has to be pleasant to look at, so anything that's built there is going to have to look, you know, pretty good. To, to kind, to be able to fit in there per our city's design standards. So I know that area is a lot of concern for people, but it, uh, in, in my opinion, at, at the, at the, at the least that. That strip of lots there right along uh, Pico deserve consideration as, as being, to be included in um. Yeah, in the inventory, so if staff were to look into that further, I think that might be a good thing. Right, anything else on that page? So then the next page we've got, we're actually going to skip a page, we'll go to page eleven of seventeen and we'll look at sites. Um, uh, R. S and T. Those are in the, via Pico Plaza area. Any observations about those? Um, Commissioner Blackwell?
I do. Yes, Jim, I uh, I see this uh, as another. Opportunity, uh, only because of the spatial um. Availability there, I, you know, just looking, you know, at the history of this area. Um, there's been sort of an ebb, ebb and flow. I, I think it warrants uh, consideration as well. Again, you know, I'm, I'm pulling from recent um. Development in Mission Viejo at, at the five in Crown Valley. It may be a much smaller scale, but some numbers uh, might be appropriate uh, in this area as well. So I think um, proximity to primary corridors, uh, spatial availability, parking. I, I, I see it as a good location as well.
Commissioner Brown?
Um, yeah, I've been in that shopping center a lot. I go to the gym down there, Fitness nineteen. So the way that, where the commercials, things are lined up there. Probably consider lot T. The, the lot that goes along the access road next to the freeway. Uh, along that area there could be uh. From the, where you actually turn into the shopping center after where. In the ends going up towards uh, Holiday Inn Express. Probably a few, few units in there, like, like Commissioner Wu says, meeting, meeting our design standards. I don't know if this shopping center qualifies as a gateway or not, but uh, we certainly have the design standards. So you probably, we got one lot in there. Or the rest of the stuff is probably pretty well compact. Yeah. Shopping center's got a little occupancy rate problem right now. Tuesday morning left, staples left, but they're trying to refill, so once you get that frame filled up, it'll be. Yeah, almost fully parked, but there'll be some there. A little bit of surplus lawman for, for my road there too. Leave it in for that part.
Commissioner Wu?
Yes, same here, uh, I think this list has, has gone through uh, extensive vetting process by the staff, so. Uh, we cannot lightly take any of them out if we want to spread them out instead of concentrate them. Into even smaller area. Um, you know, uh, so, so not much specific comments on RS and the T. Um, I ju, I want to jump back to C, the target aside. Uh, since we don't know if they're going to pull the permit for that new, uh, new commercial portion. Uh, let's keep it, or if they don't, then it becomes a viable site for some project development. Plus it doesn't hurt them anyway, it just give them more, more opportunity, another possibility to develop a site. So that's my comment.
Okay, um, I, I'm in basic agreement. I think you, you, you know, again, it's, it's, is my question is always, is there a path? Is there, you know, it's not, it doesn't have to be a certain path, but is there a reasonable path to getting this done? I think when you look at that site, they lost last year, they lost one of their anchor stores, um, Staples, and I'm not sure if they've replaced that or not. Um, so you know, if, if. You know, it, it kind of depends on the owners. I believe that's a family trust that owns that particular site. Um, you know, it, it depends on how they feel, you know, the viability of it, what the viability of it is. But in, until we know for sure, I think it's, it's probably reasonable to leave it in there and allow staff to do. A little more investigation, maybe contacting owners and um, you know, see uh, 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 you know, continuing, continue with the investigation there. Um. All right, there's nothing more on that one, I'll go to the next page and talk about site uh, U, which is the one on um, Avenue de Pico. Uh, just to the west of the freeway. Any observations about that, Commissioner Brown?
Um. Boy, tough pick, right next to a women's outlet we just approved. Very small. Hardly usable, uh, I know, well, in this business that we've been through this before. For the housing, where we go around the city, but it's a box, so I'd say okay, leave it in, but it's. Going to get a little, a couple apartments in there, a couple units in there. Public is listening in, that's where we're going to make all our money is. Counting noses toes in every lot we can find. Even in, I, I don't know if it's viable or not, but we'll see what happens. Little shopping center there now.
Commissioner Wu?
Yeah, I just have a question to Jennifer, uh, wha, what make you to uh. Add this parcel to the list?
Yeah, so we are looking at this parcel um, for a couple of reasons. One is that it's uh, near or adjacent to sites that are being redeveloped or could be redeveloped. Uh, and two, it's along a transportation area. Uh, it's not that far away from the train station there at North Beach. And so there might be some opportunity there and then it's also um, close to the freeway. If some, if uh, the residents were driving, they have easy access to uh, the freeway there. Um, the other consideration is that although it's a smaller site, it's a smaller site and so it gives uh. It would provide a, an alternative opportunity to say a larger housing development. Um, so maybe that is something that we should continue to look at. Um, you know, having a balance of larger sites and then smaller site opportunities.
Okay, well, thank you. Um. Yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm fine with, with it, stay there. I, I, I'm not very sure about to the viability, but, but um, um. Your explanation i- is a good one. So I'm, 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 I'm supportive to include it, or to keep it on the list.
Any other comments on that one? So we'll go to the last page thirteen um, and talk about sites um, V and W. Any comments on that, on those? Commissioner Wu?
Yeah, I think I already talked about it a little bit. Uh, V is uh, left, the left side of a V is commercial. The, the right side of a V is open space and the W is open space. If you look at the previous specific lane, that's the intersection of previous two forty one and a Pico. So, uh, now. If we want to. Rezone them to. Residential, then according to the staff, we most likely need to go through a ballot. I, I think, you know, V um. Not willing to give up the C portion of that, the commercial portion of that. But the open spacey, open space portion of it. It's, it's pretty heavy, there's lots of grading to be done. Um, it's a challenge to add, although it's maybe fourteen, fourteen acres, but. You really don't get a fourteen acres developer land there, not a hundred percent sure. Um, but W is an ideal location. Or understand it's open space and the need, may need a ballot measure to get approved by the citizen. Um, it's next to uh, Menasino, called Menasino Phase Two, whatever. And I even think, as I mentioned, that the city should explore the opportunity to acquire the land. Next to W, also served by Christian Anitos Road, the new, the new uh, right of way. Because that portion can be served from that, um, the new Christian, Christian Anitos Road. Or if not, then from the Pico, you can have a, a road coming up. Um, it may not solve our six psycho problem. But you never know how long those things take. And, and we should have started and it may be helpful in the future. And it, yes, if we annex this, this piece of land, let's, let's call it a ten acre land. It's going to create its own housing demand, but it's not a lot. And the same community has sixty-five thousand people. We have nineteen square miles of land. And so that, that means our population density is five per acre. So if we get another ten acres land, even with that number, we need accommodate another fifty people. If the logic goes that way, that's not a lot because we can build uh, you know, more than two hundred u- units there. So we use a small portion to accommodate the, the additional needs, but much of that can be used to satisfy. The current need of the existing, um, within the existing boundaries. So I, I strongly recommend that the city look into uh, the potential. Engage with the Rancho, Rancho um, Mission Viejo. And I can volunteer myself to sit down with them to hash out a hypothetical layout. To decide which land they can, they can sell, sell to us. But I know they sell the land of uh, Travis Canyon there. That's a huge land for, for a co, um, dozens of a million dollars, so. I, I assume the city, Rancho Mission Viejo needs the city and they are cooperative with the city on number issue. So the cost of acquiring that land cannot be too high. And it's worthwhile to explore that opportunity, if, if not for this cycle, then for the future cycle.
Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, I'd say leave both parcels in uh. For now, uh, you do have a carve out admission, uh, measure D, if you're under ten acres, I think it is. Where you don't have to go to the, you, you can, uh, you don't have to go to a ballot measure, if I recall, there was a. If I recall, there was a, a small exception to the rule there that so a portion of those two parcels could uh, probably developed by city council without having the ballot measure.
Because I thought it was, I could be wrong, but I thought it was one acre, but uh, that the city could do independent of the vote, so.
A little bigger than that, because I know the Shelter Coalition, when they bought those ten acres down there in the valley from uh, Business Park. Uh, it fits about in that area for the car. But I'm not sure it's worthy of the, of the staff exploring that. Some of the exceptions. Uh, right now, I'd leave those two parts.
Commissioner Blackwell?
Well, yeah, I'm I'm with uh, generally uh, sharing the same thoughts on these parcels, I, or these areas. I do, I do appreciate the continuity in use. Uh, you know, we have residential uh, usages there. Um, we've got, you know, the densities get a little higher as you get towards the end of Pico, and I think it works. Just curious to know, uh, Jennifer, the affordable housing count uh, in or adjacent to uh, area W above and around Christianos Road. Do you have those numbers handy? I think we've already got some there, right?
We do, and um, I don't wanna misspeak, but I can pull that up.
Okay, well, I guess the point is, um, you know, don't, don't have to put too much energy in Jennifer. I just wanted to confirm that, yeah, we, and we do have continuity there, and I, I can appreciate it. Again, you know, I wanted to underline the point that Commissioner Rowland mentioned, and I had also mentioned that you know, low cost housing does not mean high crime. There's not a relationship there. You know, we we may see uh, with higher densities, more people, you know, varying degrees of of unfortunate situations happening, but I, I wouldn't draw any um, relativity to, you know, affordable housing and high crime. Um, and with that aside, again, continuity, I'm a big fan of that. I like it. I like to keep residential and the residential if we can. Uh, I'm not a fan of splitting up um, you know, the zoning too much. I I am a fan of looking again, uh, as I mentioned earlier on, uh, looking at opportunities in areas that are already developed, that have square, uh, that have um, space that's just not utilized and could be uh, repurposed. So, which neither of these areas includes, so I won't expound anymore on that. But uh, just wanna put that out there, because we are adjacent to some of those types of uses that I mentioned earlier.
I um, you know, if V's got some commercial zoning to it, I think that that area would be good um, to include. But any open space area, I think, is i- is is very problematic at best. Um, you've got, for one thing, you've got a lot of pushback. You know, we've seen it in the past, like, you know, it's it's been a few years since we've had any call for or suggestions for doing something in open space, but it's pretty precious to people in San Clemente. It's kind of part of the, 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 the city's identity. And that's one of the reasons why we've got a ballot measure in the city, if you wanna use any of it. And um, the first thing that would happen is that there would be a big pushback. I, and not even because it's, it it would be for low income housing, just because it's using up some open space. Um, a similar recommendation came up when we were looking at SB two and emergency shelters and the requirement for zoning with that. There was a big pushback against that, and and one of the discussions we had was, well, if every time you get a use that people don't necessarily, you know, want in any part of the city, and you start to say, well, we'll put it in the open, you know, we'll allocate some of our open space for that. You're now kind of nickel and diming away the open space that is is precious to the community. And the community is sensitive to that. So, you know, that's sort of the first hurdle, and then it's gotta get on the ballot. And then it would have to be approved on the ballot, and then, of course, someone would actually have to go and and build it. So, to me, it's, you know, is there a path? Is there like a, you know, uh, 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 an actual path to get this done? Well, yes, there is that path, but what's the likelihood of being successful with that path? I I don't think it's, I don't think the likelihood of being successful with building, with allocating open space for affordable housing is gonna be something that, that in my mind anyway, that we should include um, in the inventory, because it's it's kind of unlikely. It sounds like I'm in the minority with that, so um, you know, the consensus sounds like, you know, you probably want staff to continue to leave it in as potential options. But my feeling about it is, is, is i- it's just, it's, it's, you know, politically, financially, time wise, just the stuff that you need to do. Um, administratively, it's, it's gonna be tough. Um, I'll also say, as far as annexing a port, some new portion, but there's, that kind of opens up a can of worms. I think Gabriel, you know, pointed out, there's, you know, now you have to, you, there's a whole another administrative layer that you've gotta do when you annex something. Uh, and in addition to that, even if we could, and we could afford to purchase that land, there's also um, infrastructure things we have to worry about, that we might have to provide. Um, our fire stations, for instance, right now are very carefully laid out, because they, the response times to various parts of the city has to be, I think, five minutes or something. Um, and i- it's it's tight. They were, when they laid that out, it was very kind of precise. So I don't know how much annexation we can do without a requirement to add another fire station. And not only do you have to build it, but it costs about two million a year, the last I heard, so it might be more now, about two million a year to run that. So, you know, the, that, that's a kind of another layer, another, you know, the, you know, issue with the potential of annexing something specifically for the purpose of having low income housing is, is we might have a lot more hoops to jump through and a lot more costs than than we, than we expect. So um, I I think for now anyway, we should probably try to keep it within our, within our borders and see what we can do with there. If for some reason we absolutely can't reach our numbers, then maybe that's a, that'll be another tool in the toolbox, toolbox for the future. But those are my thoughts about, about that particular area. Um, so those are all the things that have, I'm sorry, Don, did you uh, did you have more you wanted to add?
Yeah, I just reinforce your consideration. I know fact, planning area eight uh, will require a fire station, and that's in the Rancho Ranch Plan. So, once you poke out of that area and planning area eight, uh, for that development out there, uh, there is a fire station on the plane.
I'm sorry, Don, I can't hear you very well. There's something interfering with your microphone.
Okay, I just wanted to uh, reinforce your comment on fire station. There are about two million. And planning area eight uh, is, in this plan, has a fire station in it. If you go poke out of that area. Fire station response time does uh, come into play.
Okay, and uh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Wu, did you have something you wanted to add?
Uh, yes, um, now what you said, they are all true. And there are lots of photo, there's lots of food for the city to jump through to make that happen. Uh, I think we should still uh, allow us to explore that. Um, the staff also br- um, bring this, bring it to our attention that this is located in a very fire, very high fire hazardous severity zone. Um, but much of uh, Rancho San Clemente and a large portion of Talaga is in very high fire, it's alone and very hu- very by higher hazardous severity zone. So that alone doesn't uh, doesn't preclude these uh, these laws to be considered. Um, you know, they, they are open space, but they, they were designed for um, freeway exchange. The concrete uh, forest, uh, con- huge concrete structure there. Well, what um, what's envisioned here, affordable housing, isn't necessarily worth a, a freeway structure. So I think there are, not to mention that there are some exceptions in measure V and in a related ordinance that the city may be able to explore to get around the ballot, and if the, even if it needs to go to ballot. Um, who knows? I I think it's worth trying.
Okay, so um, that's uh, that's what staff presented. I know there's been a couple of uh, potential recommendations for th- things to add. Um, Don, we talked about um, your um, the, the, the area that you were talking about. Um, Commissioner Wu, I think you were gonna suggest uh, that there was another parcel or two um, that we might add.
Yes, uh, first of all, I'd like to um, react to uh, Commissioner Brown's suggestion to include these two large parcels in um, Rancho San Clemente Business Park. I I would agree that to, to include these parcels. And in addition, on the other side of the road, there is a smaller parcel that's also vacant. And these parcels can be um, should be studied to see if uh, if it's appropriate to have uh, affordable housing there. I I think it's, in general, it's a good idea. I understand it's industrial land use, so maybe there's some incompatibility there. But they're not a heavy industry, they're a light industry. I think we um, w- w- we we should have staff to study the, the possibility to, to include these parcels into the uh, additional housing overlay. Because a lot parcel can accommodate quite a few housing units there. And uh, these lots have been vacant, they ca- have been vacant for decades. Uh, if, if offered this additional opportunity for development, maybe the owner is open to having some housing development there. And it's in general a good thing, because this promotes the job housing uh, balance and reduce the traffic. And um, not to say that the parking in this industrial area or business park area, they kind of offset each other. Um, the height and the peak demand from residential and the peak demand of business use, they're, they're, they're they're offset very well. So you don't need to add tons of parking there by having these two users mixed. So that's, that's industrial use land. Um, I think if, if you, if you drive up La Parta, all the way to the end, next to uh, the Speed Sports Park, and I go up here, there's a la- there's a last piece of land. People are driving motorcycle there. I don't know the land use of that parcel. Uh, and that's also in, um, you know, we can look at that. And then, on top of that, um, Baseball Diamond, there's a large parcel, the kind of a triangle shape. And it's being vacated, vacant for a long time. I don't know that if we have a master plan for this sports park. What is the use for that piece of land? Um, I'd like to know a little bit more about that. Uh, La Parta and Vista Hermosa. Um, I know the city is trying to maybe get some money by selling it or leasing it out um, to a gas station. Um, I always think of this as such an important gateway into the city, and the gas station probably is not the best land use in the long term. It is the most profitable land use for the short term though. So, I I I hope, I can only hope, it's, it's up to the city council, I can only hope that the city um, just leaves it out and for the future possibility to have a mixed use projects there, uh, which may accommodate some housing. Um, beyond that, the existing city hall. Um, I'm, I don't know the status of that land. If the city hall is all move, being moved to uh, nine, ten negotiate, that land across the senior, across the church and the senior housing will be available as a surplus land. Uh, I don't know the city's uh, plan for that piece of land. It's across the street, there's a medium density, or the down, down, down wants to say something down.
But the current city hall, the old city hall where we meet, was put into the affordable housing overlay. That got us uh, our housing element approved at HCD and uh, in Sacramento in two thousand eleven. It got us across the finish line. In fact, as the city is now in negotiation to try to sell the property, that's another thing they've gotta replace when they sell it, because we put that in the uh, affordable housing overlay. It's there already.
Jennifer, can you confirm that older city hall is the affordable housing overlay?
Yep, we put it in that, that was, that was uh, suggested by uh, Lori Doncheck, when she was on city council, and they staff, the council voted it in. And that's, and uh, Sacramento was so impressed that we hocked that city hall that it got us across the finish line and getting the housing all, that one approved one back in two thousand eleven.
But I'm looking, but I'm looking at the overlay map Jennifer just presented. It's not there. Jennifer?
Need to go back and look at it.
I, yeah, um, I think that we would need to come back. Uh, our, our interactive GIS map shows that it has an emergency shelter overlay, um, not an affordable housing overlay. And so before I confirm that, um, I would wanna go back to our GIS files and just confirm whether.
That was our final approval for for the SB two cliff.
No, the SB two overlay gone, has has, is gone, because the city one time zone, all city owned land as SB two overlay.
But if they haven't rezoned that, you know, yeah.
Yeah, but the city hall itself, I, I think they put it, they uh, they offered it up in the overlay. I'm almost certain.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's pretty much it. Um, regarding the triangular site of the Pico, um, it's, it's too complicated. Um, I I I don't leave it out for now. There's a lot of things around it. And and I think we'd better leave it out at this moment.
Um, I I and I will, will say to, as kind of an addendum to Commissioner Wu, I I think it's some of those, particularly in the industrial areas, some of those sites might be really good to look at. My, my concern with them, there there's certainly advantages, you know, walking distance to jobs there, that sort of thing is is great. But my concern there is, is, you know, that's all zoned industrial, mostly light industrial, I think. And these are residences, so there is that compatibility issue that I would be worried about. We, we may need to have some extra protections there, because even if this is low income housing, it deserves to be a residence like any other residences. So I think if, if we look at including those lots, which we, I think we probably should, we probably also have to look at some kind of additional zoning constraints, either with those lots or adjoining properties or something, to make sure that those are, those are decent livable areas, and we're not just kind of dumping them into an industrial site.
I completely agree. That's where the EIA comes into.
Yeah, um, Commissioner Brown, just before you jump on, okay, he's coming back on. Um, Commissioner Blackwell has dropped a couple times, and I was a little worried, because that puts us under a quorum if he uh, if he isn't able to connect. So, uh, please, go ahead, Don.
Yeah, just to clarify, in the business park, there's two. In the business park, there's two sections. There's the business part of the business site, and there's the industrial part. And I would very, I hear your concern.
Hold on, Commissioner Blackwell, uh, Commissioner Brown's got the floor at the moment. Well, you, you were pretty garbled there, you were pretty garbled there for a minute, but Commissioner Brown's got the floor right now.
I would just share your concern, Chairman Rowland. And then in the business park, there's a subset, which is the industrial zoning part of it. And uh, putting affordable type housing in the business park is probably fine. And the industrial part, staff really has to look at it, because we've zoned that for industrial uses like plating and all sorts of chemicals and other things. Uh, and so putting residential type uh, structures in the industrial part of it, I would have a great safety. Kind of reinforce your concerns here, uh, Chair Rowland.
Yeah, yeah, so when you look at that, I think that just needs to be an aspect of, can we make it livable? But, okay. So let me um, let me kind of pause here for a moment and just look at the three areas that staff wanted us to, to cover. I think we still wanna talk a little bit about residential density. But um, just as a checkpoint here, let me list some of the things that I've got. But just as a checkpoint here, let me list some of the things that I've got from, that I've collected from our conversation about constraints. And additional sites. And then staff can tell us if we've covered those two areas sufficient to them. And then we can finish our discussion with residential density. And staff has probably picked up some things that I haven't. What I have for constraints, some of the things we talked about, not all of them, is, let's see, the special zoning for. Residential that we put in industrial zoning or protections, what have you. Concerns about using open space and our ability to actually be able to successfully build some housing in open space. The potentially, we're looking at, if we're looking at Lowe's or in the Walmart area, you know, the whole area, or do we limit the number of units that, you know, to some of those. Areas along Pico or particular lots that have been identified and used some, but not all of the lots. That's what I had listed for constraints. Did anyone else have in that area that they wanted to make sure staff got? Okay. And you perhaps you things that I missed, Jennifer?
Yeah, I just also wanted to add that we noted that with sites that had existing commercial development, that the constraint might actually be the viability or the feasibility.
Okay. For additional sites, I didn't list all specific sites, but there was the one site Don brought up. There were a number of sites that Commissioner Wu brought up, which I'm assuming staff got or that will come up in the minutes. Let's see. Oh, and actually I had a notion there as well. And I forgot to bring up a very unpopular notion, I'm sure. We may want to take a look at some areas that are currently, that we currently have parks in. And we hate to get rid of parks, but our inventory of parks in our city is actually pretty high as compared to most cities. And that doesn't even include our beaches. So I don't know which parks, I don't. I'm sure whatever park I said, there'd be a, there'd be a lot of people crying out and saying, no, you know, no way, you're crazy. So I'm going to leave it to staff just to, you know, I'll just put a bug in your ear, so to speak. And say, you know, possibly there are underutilized, you know, there's an underutilized park somewhere. That might have enough acreage that it might be a candidate for this, given the fact that we are reasonably abundant with our park acreage right now. Anything else with additional sites that I missed, that you want to make sure staff gets?
I do know that at the beginning of the conversation, Commissioner Blackwell. Started to discuss some sites that he was looking at and I'm wondering if he had any particular sites. That he wanted to note, or if we could rely on the notes that he provided in the map.
And we just lost Commissioner Blackwell, so he probably didn't get the questions, so.
Separate notes to staff, you say?
Yeah, so he did provide some notes to staff. If, you know, one of the example sites that he brought up was golf courses, I believe that was an issue that he raised. And so maybe we can at least look at that site to start.
Okay.
Mike, did you have anything to add to that? I'm here. I apologize. Apparently I'm not connecting well. Yeah, I did, I did provide a. A hand-drawn map to Jennifer this morning and it was, it was really just. A lot of locations that I thought might be worth a discussion or consideration. And there's going to be all kinds of different perspectives on it. Golf course was one, as Jennifer had mentioned. There are some undeveloped properties such as the corner of Hermosa and La Pata, et cetera. So it just meant to. You know, really stimulate discussion and consideration, you know, of other potential locations. That's all.
Okay. So if that's it, then I think we've covered those two areas, constraints and additional sites. And the third area was that staff wanted our input on was the residential density. It sounds like we, if we zone for some of these sites, we're going to have to have a density of thirty units per acre. If I read that right, I guess the question is, is do we need higher overall or in any particular areas? Does anyone have any? Observations about that? So I'll cast in, I know. As I've been looking at this, we've got actually some ideas for extra sites, so maybe my, my thought isn't quite as valid, but. When I started seeing kind of some of the restrictions that we're going to have and, you know, we may, it may be. An uphill climb to get to our RENA numbers. There's a penalty if we don't get to those RENA numbers. That's some of these areas, we may want to look at zoning forty units per acre, a little higher density even. I know we like to keep things lower density. That's going to raise questions of things like. You know, more questions of things like, you know, traffic and traffic density and that sort of thing. You know, perfectly reasonable stuff to look at from a planning perspective. But I, it seems to me, if we can keep the density down a little bit, great, but if. It seems to me that just getting to our RENA number, getting, you know, you know, hitting that RENA number exactly. Is, we probably want to do more than that because now we see not actually. Having them built at some point someday also could be a penalty for the city. So we want to make sure there's enough in our inventory that gives people some choices and availability and. If one site doesn't really work out well, there's still enough inventory in other sites to eventually, whatever, over the ten-year period or whatever it is to reach those RENA numbers. And if we have to go to a higher density like forty units, then for some areas, then maybe that's what we have to do. Excuse me, Commissioner Brown?
Yeah. Sometimes solves your problem, but. Once again, stop, just to look at this with a fine line. If you go too high on that. The entire premise of our whole general plan that we built with the densities we build in in the current zoning area also. We had a compatibility with our roadway system and our Complete Streets Act portion of the general plan. Which is supported by the EIR, the program EIR. And so if we start tweaking density too much. Then your program EIR, you're preparing for this housing element, all of a sudden now you've got to do a traffic study. So you have to, we just can't go forty-five units per acre, then all of a sudden see our road system blow up. And so about that time, you've got to get your traffic engineer to come down and talk to you. Although I guess we just lost our traffic engineer a couple of weeks ago. So. Anyway, just, there's a little caution there of going higher density. I agree with you, Kim, that. Maybe looking at thirty, forty units, you know, per acre. Is viable. We have to, staff, you have to be careful there that we don't blow up the rest of our program element by EIR. And you don't have the secret protection you need.
Commissioner Wu?
Yes, Chair Ruling, I appreciate your thought about keeping the flexibility. Because once you zone this land as eligible to have this type of development. You don't know if it's going to happen or when it's going to happen. So we want to keep that flexibility. But on the other side, now echo Commissioner Brown's concern that when you get the density too high. You're getting into a different type of development. I think for the twenty-four units per acre, we all know how it looked like. Thirty-six, once you're getting beyond that, we're talking about a podium development. Which is a brand-new type of development. A podium, you know, with parking underneath and a residential on top, it can be multiple-story tall. I feel that we don't have to go there. I think if we just. Prescribe all these lots to the thirty dwelling units so they can be used for affordable housing or low-income housing, you know. Or maybe up to thirty-six, which is our current maximum density of high-density housing, but no more than thirty-six. Of course, I don't want to designate specific peaceful land, say this land gets thirty-six or thirty and that land cannot exceed twenty-four. That would exclude them from having affordable housing there. And in the end. If the limited amount of land we designated as eligible to have affordable housing and they don't get it developed. Then we're behind, we're way behind. So for that reason, I think we should just, of course, well, of course, it depends on the site-by-site assessment. But in general, we should make most of them, if not all of them, thirty dwelling units per acre and see what's happening. See what the market can produce.
If we can make it, if we can make it with thirty units per acre, great. But my, what I'm worried about is, say we go thirty units per acre, we identify a Tory. And we make, you know, that RENA number, the nine hundred and eighty-two, and ah, here's our nine hundred and eighty-second unit, you know, we're done, right? But what's going to happen is, is someone's going to come into a lot or part of that area, one part of the inventory and say, well, I want to do something now that's not. Low-income. And so we have to go then, because we did it in the last year, in fact, we've had to do this. We had to go in there and say, okay, we now we make the finding, I can't remember the technical term for it. We have to make the finding that we can still achieve our RENA numbers with the inventory that remains. And if we're just barely there with thirty units per acre. Then that doesn't give us any flexibility. They can't take any of that land and say, okay. You know, we now see that some of this land, we want to develop in a different way, but we still have enough left over to maintain our RENA numbers. If that's the case. At thirty units per acre, then we're going to, I think we have to allow for the possibility that some of, some, we're going to take some of these areas and say. Okay, that's got to be thirty-six units per acre, that's got to be forty units per acre, so we can get over that nine hundred and eighty-some-odd. Unit number, RENA number. So we've got some flexibility and we will be able to make that finding perhaps. If we come across that situation again, where someone wants to do a good project, but it's in a place that's currently zoned for low-income housing. So, and that would be the only reason I would say to raise that density is if we've got to get whatever the right number is, five percent or ten percent over the RENA number.
That's a very reasonable argument. I think my approach is to dedicate, designate more land. Than a bare minimum to the additional housing zone. So for example, if we need accommodate nine hundred units and it's based on thirty units per acre. We don't just dedicate thirty acres land. We know it's not going to happen. So we need more than thirty to give us the pushing to accommodate this.
Yeah, more than a skinny cat.
I think you guys are both approaching the different end of the spectrum, but you're trying to hit common ground. By the way, the re-computation was for sort of senior housing. When they went market rate.
Yeah, oh, that's right, okay. Okay, any other, any other comments on? On the residential density issue for now?
Oh, we simply make them thirty-six, equivalent to high residential, high density. For residential use.
Don, did you have more to add?
No, let me go mute here. My clip is getting tired.
Okay. Jennifer, Gabriel, do you have enough from us on the residential density issue? For guidance on what you want to come back to us with?
We do, yes. I don't have any other questions, Gabriel.
I don't, no, I thought this was a very good dialogue with the planning commission. Yeah, and then, you know, if there, if you have any more suggestions, I know some of the planning commissioners have already mentioned. Thoughts for getting more input from the public or outlets to be able to share information, please let us know. We're very open to hearing that.
Okay, then if you guys are good, then we can close this issue and move on.
I add one more comment. I think of the public education and community outreach is very important. And a lot of people don't understand the picture well enough. They, you know, show them some example of successful projects. You know, some people have concern about the relationship or correlation between crime and a low-income housing, which is not true. But we ought to, we ought to present them some information, want to show them that that's not the case, you know. For the people nearby those potential sites. Reach out to them and engage with them in a session. Hopefully that. The COVID nineteen limit can be lifted soon, so we can have some better face-to-face engagement with the community members. So they understand it and, you know, just because they're not too far from the zone, doesn't mean a negative thing. Much of El Camino Real corridor is affordable housing, pretty much. So much of the southwest San Clemente and the southeast of San Clemente is within half mile of affordable housing. They could happen. They haven't happened a lot, but they can happen anytime. So I think those are the information that we need to relate to the community to alleviate the fear and misunderstanding of affordable housing. We have a general plan, inclusionary housing program. The community. The community per our general plan is an inclusive community and. Today's, the housing price is very high. Orange County just has a median house price of eight hu. About eight hundred thousand dollars. San Clemente median house price is over a million. The median household income in San Clemente, in Orange County is ninety thousand. So if you look at moderate income, that's anywhere from seventy-seven thousand to a hundred, a hundred and eight thousand dollars annual income. It's not a small number, but that's you and there's a severe affordability issue there. So, you know, who are these people? They're our service providers, they are our teachers. And the city is obligated by state law to provide feasible housing opportunities for them. So I think that's important for people to understand that, that not providing those housing opportunity is not an option. Much like, you know, you have to stay with the law and there are consequences of not complying with those laws. A recent example is the last couple of years, we had some SB2 emerging for shelter issue. As a result, the city received an injunction from the court preventing the city from issuing building permit along much of El Camino Real. That lasted almost a year. So the city cannot afford this consequence anymore. So that's my comment about.
Very well put, very well put.
Commissioner Blackwell, you want to wrap us up?
Yeah, well put, Commissioner Wu. It's good to have that perspective. We get lost in our world of land use and. Setbacks and height limits and all that stuff, but there's another, there's another element at work here and we're trying to, you know. Way in on land use issues that are really beyond the realm of land use. Really, it's the people part, so. Thank you for putting that out there into the record, Commissioner Wu. Appreciate it.
That's all I have. All right, great. It sounds like staff has what they need from us for this evening, so I will close out this item. And we'll move. Thank you very much, Jennifer and Gabriel. That was well done, Jennifer. Thanks for positioning it like you did for us. I think it was very helpful. Our next item is old business. We have none. And item eleven is reports of commissioners and staff. Does anyone have anything to report? I don't see anyone who's got anything to report, so we'll entertain a motion for a church. Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry. I got this, I got this book here, shared a parking, I'm sorry, yeah. Shared a parking. I borrowed it from the. Shared a parking. I borrowed it from from the staff. I'm just in the beginning of reading it. I read the older version, version two. This is the latest version three. Shared a parking has been used a lot, and it has a lot of benefits, it reduces parking demand for for development, especially mixed use development. And I want to, if the commission had the desire or appetite to have a study session, we're fortunate to have a senior planner with with a sort of advanced specialty on on transportation issues. And so I'm fully confident the staff has the capability to give us some training on that. So I just want to put it out there, see if we would like to have a training, a study session on shared parking.
Sure. Yeah, I think it might be a good idea, but it might also be something for after the new planning commissioner term as well. It sounds like it sounds like something that new planning commissioners, because well, you know, looks like we're going to have, you know, some, there's at least one open seat. So possibly it's something to save for them so that they can enjoy it as well.
Sure. Yeah, I think that's a good idea. And if the city, you know, I I think we we ought to do some of the shared parking analysis. And if if an applicant wants to use outside consultant, we should have a standard, a protocol that your parking analysis should stay with this protocol so we can evaluate them. But anyway, planning commission, last night, the city has, the city council had a sense of a discussion about a planning commission, by the way. It looks like it's possible that the city council kind of wants to reform the the planning planning commission one more time and likely with five members.
Well, that's going to cost them more people to appoint because without seven, the design review subcommittee becomes a separate committee. So pretty soon you got to need ten or, you know, you'll have two separate committees, but they'll work through that number, I guess.
I don't know.
That's why we were left at seven compared to the rest of them going to five. Therefore, if we only go to five, then the design review subcommittee will become a separate standalone committee of probably five. So now you have ten people involved versus seven. So.
Or you don't have a design review committee and you're you're doing that from the dais, which is deadly, you know, not not desirable. So I'll have I'll have to look at that. I know that comes up periodically. And it sometimes comes up because the city council members haven't looked into the planning commission yet. They don't see the scope of what we do and kind of why we're set up the way that we're set up. They just say, why, why do we have seven people doing that? So, you know, which is a reasonable question, but there's reasonable answers. So.
Well, our term our term was extended twice, and many of the city council members never had an opportunity to make appointments. So it's understandable that they can they they can have their own idea of the new formation.
There needs to be some outreach and Gabriel, maybe if that was a discussion last night, you might need to get through Cecilia and go to the acting city manager and put some numbers out there, council members saying, okay, if you do this, you have to form another whole commission. You know what I mean?
And I I've reached out after elections to new city council members and offered to, you know, discuss planning commission with them and how we're set up and why we're set up the way we are and that kind of a thing. And, you know, I've had I've had one or two take me up on it, but many of them haven't. So you know, I know because they're busy, I'm sure. They've got, you know, when they first start, they they're drinking from a fire hose. But but maybe it's time to have some for the to have some, I don't know, education or conversation with them if they're not aware of kind of the scope of our portfolio.
Chair Ruin, we nominate you to run the tape and go do outreach in the next couple of weeks.
I'm I'm happy to. You know, if 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 they want to listen to me, I'm happy to have a conversation with them. So. All right. Anything else? Oh, yes, Gabriel.
Yeah, really quick. Commissioner Wu presented a the book, the shared parking book from the Urban Land Institute. So we did purchase that book. It is a book that's a lot of time referenced in like parking studies. And so you'll see a reference in your reports. So that's available. If you ever want to check it out, we'll make it available here at the city. So if you, there's a project coming up and there's a parking study and it cites that book, you can check it out from us.
What you tell us, you let him, you let him inside the door of City Hall and down in your spaces to pick up a book.
Well, no, we we didn't let him in. We left it in an envelope for him. Yeah. So that's available, just to let you know.
Okay.
Run a motion to adjourn?
That would be great.
I move that we adjourn to the next regular meeting. Study session planning commission will be held on five May twenty twenty one at six PM via telephones as the April twenty one, twenty twenty first, twenty twenty one meeting has been canceled due to lack of business.
Wow. All right, motion by Brown. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Blackwell. I'll call the roll. Commissioner Wu?
Hi.
Commissioner Brown?
Hi.
Commissioner Blackwell?
Hi.
And Ruland votes aye, passes four zero. So we will see you May seventh. Have a good one, everyone.
Night, everyone.
May fifth.
May fifth, excuse me.
It'll be late to your own meeting, Chair Ruin.
Two days late.
And you could report on your outreach to council.